Welcome, everyone. And we will start with any comments from the public regarding items that are not on the agenda. All right, seeing none, Mr. Young, do we have any amendments to the agenda?
We do not.
Okay. All right, we'll move on to our student representative report and announcements.
Norah. Some announcements this week is the Chamberlain School open house scheduled for October 14th from 6:30 to 7:30. October 9th, this Friday, is a teacher in service day, so no further pursuit is. In October 10th, we don't have any school. Also, as a reminder, the Chitting Grant Island Franklin Regional Meeting is Wednesday, October 7th, and is open to all board members with a late dinner at 5 o'clock. This year, you will be joined by the Secretary of Education Rebecca Holcomb and members of her team. Next week in the high school, juniors and sophomores are starting some standardized testing with the PSATs and plant tests, and freshmen have one of their community services planned soon.
Thank you. All right, David, we'll move on to the city school collaboration.
Yep, so Elizabeth and I, as you know, have met in the past with Kevin Dorn and Pat Noack. We've not had another meeting since we last had a school board meeting, so those are needing to get scheduled. Things have been busy, but important to note, I think, for city and school collaboration, we do have an October 13th Steering Committee meeting that will be at the Frederick H. Tuttle Middle School at 6:30. Again, that's the Steering Committee meeting. That's made, that is comprised of both the entire school board and the entire city council. By charter, we come together. This is one important one, and we'll be talking about master planning and visioning. We'll be talking about some legislative actions and other topics as well. So all are welcome to attend that.
When should that agenda be posted on our website?
It should, it will be posted this week. I'm going to say by Thursday, and it will be posted in the same manner in which we post our, our school warnings.
Great. All right, thank you. We'll move on to agenda item number seven, the Southburn's voter information overview.
Yeah, so I know for at least a lot of the board members are saying, "Why are we getting this now, David?", right? But I think it was, again, I was thinking a little bit ahead that I don't necessarily feel we need to have a huge discussion about this, but I think it's really important as we look to continue to collaborate with our community, what are some things we could strategically be doing now versus, you know, once we get into it? And so in the past, again, I give kudos to Martin, and we started this process. This has been updated since the last, and, you know, I just felt that it would, was worthy of conversation at some point in the future around how we want to target our efforts to ensure all community members are being informed. So if you'd like, we could do a little bit of a deeper dive, maybe at an upcoming meeting or a couple of board members, if they wish to work to disaggregate and understand it more, we could, we could bring it back. What's your pleasure?
Any comments from board members?
One thing I think that we were going to need to pay attention to is that in, it must be District 7-4, but we had all that house destruction there, and so that's going to change the voter turnout, just to start with in that neighborhood.
Good point.
I don't know. Those people maybe are absorbed in the other districts now, but maybe not.
Mm-hmm.
To me, it seems like the, almost the only thing here is the abysmally low participation rate of the voters in actually voting. So, you know, I think that should be a note of concern between us and the city. I mean, there are some details below that, whether how the actual people who voted voted, but it seems to me that the participation rate of less than 20% is not a great thing.
So you're looking at, Dan, the 2015 numbers of almost 12,000 total voters and about 2,600 votes cast?
Right.
Do we have, one question I have, David, is do we, do we actually have the information on, you've indicated on the glossary terms, "other eligible voters", so those would be voters who currently do not have at least one student attending a school? What is that number?
I don't know off the top of my head. We, we do have it, though. We have been, again, the city has worked with us on getting a lot of this data, and Ray Mann has worked with me to put this together. Again, initially, the construct was done through Martin and you folks to get this. Again, we could plug in some of the, in the left margins, what the, what those numbers are.
I, I think if we have them, maybe for whatever year, and maybe what the growth or, or decline rate is over a five-year period, that might be good to put that in the, in the terms.
Mm-hmm. And I think the other thing is, it's nice that you have students here. I know they're here for another topic, but I think it's also important that, you know, students are a big arm of our democracy in helping folks to be informed about our budgets and the things that are happening. And again, I think this is, some of them are of voting age, and they also can help with, with some of this very data that we're looking at. So that, that also is, I think, an opportunity to, again, Pat Burke and his administrative staff, I think, work pretty diligently around engaging and getting the word out, but our students could also act in that way to help inform the public as well, or help inform them for us.
Is this information we want to include in the Steering Committee meeting, even if it's just an informational?
Sure, I'm, it's up to you, Elizabeth. I'd be happy to do so if you'd like.
I would at least, if not a topic, maybe just put it in as an informational packet, and we can keep it in front of the council.
I'd like to say that was the one item I couldn't remember, but I'm not sure that it was, so.
We'll, we'll say it was for now.
Yeah, great, no problem.
Great. Any other comments on the voter information? Okay, thank you. All right, we'll move on to agenda item eight, the Rebels Name Update. If I can start on this one, I know, David, you'll kind of carry the conversation here. I know we probably have a lot of folks in the audience who are interested in providing some input to the board on this topic. I am going to ask, because of the, our meeting agenda and the, and the fact that we've had a couple of meetings dedicated to this topic, that comments be limited in time, and please introduce yourselves when we open this up for public, and if you've had a chance to speak to the board before, unless you have had a change of opinion, I just ask you to kind of keep your comments very brief and succinct, just in the interest of time and letting other folks speak as well. So David, do you want to kick this off?
Sure. At the last board meeting, again, the, the board, just to kind of start this out, the board asked for some administrative feedback specifically from the middle school and the high school administration. What I provided to the board is this kind of a, a collective summary, if you will, of our administrative feedback and ideas. We do not come right out and specifically say you need to do this or that. We provide you, the board, with some options. I would like to read that to you. Myself, Pat Burke, and Carson Slenter, who is joining me as well, we kind of partnered in, in, in reading this, although Mr. Burke, we're sad to say, has his daughter, who's, I think he's in the emergency room with his daughter, I think with an athletic injury, so he apologizes for not being present. He certainly wants his students to know that he would like to be here and wants the board to know as well. So Carson and I will share some things with you that we have put together. Also important to note that, as an administrative team, we have, we have talked about this. We've talked about it several times, and, you know, we feel that we're connected in, in our recommendation to you. So allow me to, to read through this. "So, dear school board, you have requested that the administration weigh in on the current situation regarding our school's use of the Rebel nickname, and we humbly submit the following for your review. We want to begin by recognizing that the school board has been prudent in allowing for the community time to discuss this issue. Individuals who have shared their opinions before the school board have been received with respect and appreciation. This is an important issue. It's not about political correctness, or about money, or even about tradition. As administrators in the South Burlington School District, we seek to lead and support a district with a strong tradition of innovation and excellence. While there may be, may, where there may be many challenges, challenging issues before us on a daily basis, this issue is significant. The matter deserves a serious deliberation on the part of the board. Summarizing some important elements of the situation, there seems to be, be moderate agreement that the Rebel nickname was not adopted by the school's founders in reference to the Confederacy, or because we're South Burlington, but rather in reference to the city separation from Burlington. This is a consistent, consistently held belief. There was a time when some students adopted Confederate imagery as an expression of school spirit. The school was tolerant of these actions, that is, in the '60s and '70s, school officials permitted these images to appear in yearbooks and at support, and at sporting events. There is no evidence that there were Rebel flags on official SB uniforms. It may be important to note that, contrary to what was recently reported in the Burlington Free Press, current school officials have never been evasive regarding this issue. Unfortunately, the Free Press presented an inaccurate version of this part of the situation when they claimed they have found some proof related, which was never in question. Principal Burke has met with the reporter regarding this matter. It is unclear if the Free Press will act to correct this misrepresentation. In August's statements, Mr. Burke asserted that the school took action to formally rebrand the Rebel, starting in the '90s. This was not completely correct, when we have, when we have come to believe that the movement away from the imagery may have started well before the '90s, and the original brand was likely not related to the Confederacy. Thus, actions taken by school officials in the '70s, '80s, and '90s related to the elimination of Confederacy imagery may have been more of a renewal and confirmation of expectations that were only, that, that there be only accurate depiction, depictions of school-intended nickname. Still in the past, symbols of Confederacy were used by students to express school spirit. South Burlington High School responded with a reclarification of the school's meaning of Rebel, and eventually, in the early '90s, in the early '90s, took the step of a formal, outright ban on all symbols that could be viewed as Confederate, a ban that eliminated the Rebel mascot." Let's have Carson.
Yeah, I'm going to continue on with the administrative position on appropriate mascots for educational institutions. We believe that mascots representing ethnic groups such as the Fighting Sioux, Redskins, Dutchmen, Indians, or Fighting Irish are inappropriate. These mascots always include monikers of other imagery which perpetuate negative and pedestrian stereotypes in these cultures. Crusaders is also an inappropriate mascot for an educational institution, as it can only reference the violent Catholic medieval religious military crusade. We agree with our peer schools that chose to go in a different direction with regards to those mascots. We accept that Confederate imagery as an expression of school spirit was present at SBHS in the '60s, '70s, and with diminishing frequency in the '80s and '90s. We state that our knowledge there has been no Confederate image, to our knowledge, I apologize, there's been no Confederate imagery used as an expression of school spirit at the high school for over 20 years. We believe that the majority of our current student body and alumni do not affiliate, readily affiliate their Rebel nickname with the Confederacy. So the options we are presenting to the school board, if the school board believes that, that the Rebel name is forever an unacceptable name because Confederate flags and imagery were at one time present at school events, or the board thinks it's unacceptable for any other reason, the board is authorized to and should change the name. If the school board believes that the formal name, excuse me, needs to be adjusted to proactively clarify its intended meaning, or to make clear its non-affiliation with the Confederacy, the board should adopt a new name which includes variations of the word Rebel. Examples for those are Colonial Rebels, Green Mountain Rebels, the Rebellion, Rebels for Justice, or just Rebels. If the school board believes the school district needs to do more to clarify continued use of Rebels as a nickname, the school can engage in a number of activities, including but not limited to the following. All school programs and publications could continue a community-developed definition of what it means to be a South Burlington Rebel. Students at the middle and high school level could be briefed as part of their social studies classes on this exact situation and on issues related to the inappropriateness of Confederate imagery in today's society. South Burlington has been without a mascot for almost 25 years. Rebels is retained as a nickname. Each school or graduating class could identify a new mascot. This mascot should be gender-neutral, nonviolent image, such as an animal rebel, named Rebel. Schools should institute a Rebel of the Quarter or Rebel of the Month theme. As part of this initiative, social studies classes could be responsible for identifying historical Rebels for Justice. Each grade level or at the middle school teaching team could be responsible for selecting and promoting who the Rebel of the Month or Quarter is, and why that historical figure was chosen to represent the most positive ideals and values of both the era and today. These historical figures could only be promoted at school-wide events, could also, and I apologize, could also be promoted at school-wide events on athletic programs and via new and traditional media. The high school could design or offer an elective social studies course called Rebels, Heroes, and Activists. The content would focus on both modern citizenships and Rebels in a historical context. So sample units for that would be Edward Snowden as a Rebel, Hero as a Traitor, or Were the Colonial Rebels, Were the Colonial Rebels Terrorists.
So in conclusion, regardless of the outcome of this matter, school administration will support the will of the community as expressed by the board. Again, I and we thank you for the time that you've allotted to this issue and your desire to proceed fully. So on behalf of the administration, we present this to you, board.
Thanks. One of the other areas I think that the board had asked for some direction on was some deliberation by students, and can you just speak to that, David? I know we had, we had access to a-
Podcast.
Podcast.
Yeah.
I don't know if that's been more broadly disseminated, or what other activities have occurred, but can you just update us on that?
Sure. Again, Patrick unfortunately isn't here, and he was going to talk specifically to that. I'm, I'm not in the, the high school. We have students that are here, but I know Mr. Burke has talked on many occasions of the collaboration and communication with students, and so he's had a variety, numerous amounts of time with, with students. Again, you referenced the podcast, they've had, I think, multiple communications that have happened, and again, I think it's important for you, the board, you haven't necessarily seen all of that, that deliberation. Again, your desire this evening was to get a little chance for, for that to be facilitated by Mr. Burke, so again, I apologize for that not happening. Again, I think you, the board, have the opportunity, have some students with you tonight. Again, maybe this is an opportunity for them and the rest of the public to be able to weigh in on, on where we are at.
And maybe before we open this up to the public, I know there's been some conversation under policy governance-
Mm-hmm.
-as to really where, what the board's role is, because there, it's, it has been difficult kind of recreating some history around the board's involvement versus student council versus administration from a past practice standpoint, but I know you did a little bit of work to kind of clarify that, so we, can we kind of get your insights there?
Sure. So maybe most people don't know, we're a policy governance district, and basically policy governance, the board, the board holds me accountable to expectations and requirements. We have limitations, and we have monitoring reports that allow me to articulate the work and the care of the district. This particular issue is, is, is one that, you know, I've tried to work through to provide, where does the decision rest? Is it solely the administrative decision, or is it squarely in the corner of the board? Under policy governance, and again, remember that we were not a policy governance before 2009, and we ran a traditional board process. It does not appear to me that the board ever took formal action to either adopt or to change, although there was board involvement in what I'll say advisement and direction along the way, as indicated in the letter. Under board policy, again, some of our rules that govern my work and the board work, when I examined that, one of the ones that I came up with is under executive limitation, talks about asset protection, and just calling out the, a couple of the headings of this, the superintendent shall not cause or allow district assets to be unprotected, inadequately maintained, or unnecessarily risked. And further, without limiting the scope of the foregoing, by this enumeration, the superintendent shall not, and I go down to 10, endanger the organization's public image, its credibility, or its ability to accomplish ends. And 11, change the organization's name or substantially alter its identity in the community. So again, those are things that I can't do. Those are limitations of me. That doesn't mean that I can't, once I advise you or inform you, but that's a, that's a limitation. And then the other one falls under 2.4.2, under the board job description, and that title again, a specific job outputs of the board. As an informed agent of the ownership are those that ensure appropriate organizational performance. Under number four, number five, actually, five, in addition to the board, has taken the following non-governing outputs, and they are negotiating contracts with teachers, administrators, and support staff. B, recognition of contribution of individuals to the success of a district. C, naming of programs and facilities involving a third party. So those are, again, are some of the, as I look at it, probably more specifically 2.7 asset protection, followed by board job description are two areas that, for me, when I look at my responsibilities and what I need to do for you, surfaces for me, are the reason that we're here talking about the Rebel name together.
And if I could just also clarify that, because the superintendent is prohibited from changing the organization's name, or substantially altering its identity in the community, by inference, the school board has that ability to do that. I think we're actually working on a proposal to modify the, modify the outline of what the responsibilities are of the school board members to make that more explicit, but right now it's implicit that, that we have the obligation to do that. Now, having said that, I'd just like to back up to what you've mentioned as an other limitation on the administration, not through the superintendent, and that's as far as endangering the organization's public image. I mean, we could find if, if certain things aren't done with respect to the Rebels name, even though the administration can't change it, but if we find that certain things are not being done to make, and because of that, we're jeopardizing the organization's public image, you know, we can direct David to correct that kind of thing, in other words. So, and some of those recommendations that came up, if we feel the Rebels name is endangering the organization's public image, or violating any other aspects of the policies, and we believe that this essentially is offered as something that, you know, these, these options that were proposed will help remedy that, that's another direction that we could do. So putting it in the policy context.
So that's a little bit of the backdrop for me, why it's here. Obviously, it's wonderful that we have a caring, concerned community around the well-being for all, and we're in a democratic process that allows for that feedback to happen. So again, that's the backdrop, Elizabeth, for the policy governance, and a little, a little highlight for those that don't know about what we do.
Any, any other questions from the board on policy governance or the administrative recommendations? Okay, why don't we spend a few minutes getting feedback from the public? And I'll just ask you to introduce yourself. Again, keep your comments brief. If somebody has already made a comment that's similar to yours, you can either agree with it publicly or stand down in the interest of time and respect for people's time, so I will open it up. I see lots of volunteers. Yes, the gentleman in the back here. Can you introduce yourself, please?
Yes, absolutely. My name is Greg Dussell. I'm a senior at the high school. I'm going to be speaking in support of keeping the Rebel name. We accept that our name does have a history behind it, but we believe that we get to choose the connotation that goes with it. See, South Burlington High School is a hotbed of fantastic kids who do fantastic things in the community. And rather than focusing on the past and what that name entails, we can give the name a new meaning, focused on what we're doing now. If we let the name go away now and die, what happens is it ends with a negative connotation that we never remedied. But if we hold on to it, I believe that we can mend that connotation, build a new history, and change what the name means. We, if we focus, we can focus on the name, what it means now, or we can focus on what it's going to mean for the people who come later. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Yes. My name is Thomas Smag. I'm also a senior at South Burlington High School, and I'm also speaking in favor of keeping the Rebel name. I kind of want to start out with a question of where we would be specifically with our country or around this world if there wasn't for rebellion. I mean, our nation was founded off of rebellion. That's who we are, and we've come this far. I believe that when the school was first put into place, the name had a bad connotation, but throughout the years, South Burlington has been building a proud tradition, and we now have a completely different name for it. With the exception of a couple of students, I believe that if you walk through the schools today, the Rebel name does not stand for the Confederacy. It does not stand for anything false that is being brought up right now. I think everybody has their own opinions, but I really believe that it's something that is really just kind of trying to put gasoline on a fire that was put out a long time ago. This is something that's not exactly an issue anymore. It's something that used to be an issue, and it was addressed by getting rid of the Rebel mascot, getting rid of the flag, and I think now it's just something that's unnecessary. And with all due respect to the school board, I want to thank you guys very much for bringing this up and giving us all a voice. I think that's why we're all here, one way or another. I think that it's something that we really don't need to spend too much time on when it comes to arguing, because it's something that, if you ask the students in the school, it's really not that much of an issue. So, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, the lady in the back, thank you.
My name is Callie Schampel. I am also a senior at South Burlington High School, and initially, I had my very concrete thoughts about changing the name, but my stance on this issue now more so relates to the acknowledgement and awareness of our history and how that kind of ties into our school community. When citizens look at South Burlington High School, citizens who don't know what we're all about, or what we strive to be, respectful, accepting, open-minded, these citizens see our name, the Rebels of South Burlington High School. We know what it means to be a Rebel, and we know what ideals we want to represent, but others don't, and that's where the issue lies. As of now, our student body is so wrapped up in the name, Rebels. It's a word. Rebels is a word that means many different things to various demographics, but the definition most associated with our school is the definition with the most negative connotation. The thing that is most lacking in the South Burlington community right now is a sense of acknowledgement and awareness. The failure on the part of the student body and school community is the fact that no acknowledgement is being given to the history by the students. Our job as students is to be respectful, to be accepting and open-minded, to be everything that we say we are. To me, I would be just as proud to be a member of this school community, whether under the Rebel name or not. Less focus needs to be on the name itself, but rather the definition we, as a community, want it to hold. Ultimately, whatever opinion each of us has, we need to meet in the middle and realize that we are what we define ourselves as, regardless of the name Rebel. If we so embody the qualities we say- Ultimately, whatever opinion each of us has, we need to meet in the middle, and realize that we are what we define ourselves as, regardless of the name Rebel. If we so embody the qualities we say we do, then more respect and attention needs to be given to all opinions and all people. A larger sense of awareness must be spread. I love this community, and what we call ourselves wouldn't change that. My goal is for all of us collectively to see where we stand, to make it clear that we can make a definition for ourselves, and that the word is not the most important thing. The definition we create and associate with that word is the most crucial aspect. I encourage everyone in this student body to think about what it means to have Rebel pride, and how that may translate into creating a sense of awareness and respect that lasts. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
My name is Ryan Sargent. I'm a sophomore at South Burlington High School. I'm in favor of keeping the Rebel name for various reasons. When I first, like, kind of heard of it and thought about it, I started thinking about Star Wars, and Luke Skywalker, and the Rebels, and how they were fighting against the Dark Lord. And that's completely true. And I, I like, always thought to myself, I said, hey, why don't I just have one of the actual Rebels from the Star Wars, like, movie be our new mascot, to be like, kind of on the field? So, I really think we should keep the name and keep a tradition going of being the Rebels. Thank you.
Sorry. I didn't prepare anything, so I'm just kind of going off my mind. I think that the problem, my name is Thomas Magg, again. I think that the Rebel name, especially the term Rebel, is such a wide, can mean such a wide range of things, that when you look at it really specifically on one of the definitions, that's not enough to change a whole organization. I mean, we're not just talking the high school, correct? We're talking high school, middle school, elementary schools, and I think that there's other things that are, we can be talking about. I think that when you start using really specific definitions for a really broad term, it can go a lot of different ways. I mean, Ethan Allen, who we all love, was a Rebel. He was known as one of the most notorious Rebels of all time. I think that's something that we should be proud about. I mean, I think the Rebels can mean for something good. And when you specifically go into the books and find one bad definition of one bad time of there being a Rebel, and try and change a whole, a whole face of what South Burlington stands for, I really just don't think that's enough information. And I really think that it's something that we all need to consider. I, I do believe, I completely agree with what Callie said, about what we stand for isn't going to change based on what the name is, but I do think that it's something we can rebrand, just like what Greg said. It's something that can come back out, it's something that we can change, because it's who we are, and we, we can all stand together, one way or another, but keeping the Rebel name is a lot easier than changing it. And there's a lot more complications if you go into changing it, and there's a lot more things that have to be dealt with. And I think if we keep it, and we keep doing what we've been doing, and building a proud tradition, and really just kind of giving the right name and the right connotation, I really don't think there's any reason to change it, so.
Thank you. Any other comments? Yes, sir.
Yeah, my name is Bob Walk. I don't expect any applause at the end of this thing. I, I appreciate the comments that have been made. I disagree with many of them, as you well know. I, I don't have the specific information as to if the board adopted the, the name, or what that, but I can't challenge that. But what I can challenge is some of the assumptions in the administrative report, because I was there at the school. And granted, the, the images phased out over the years, and in the nineties, they did take that, that formal step to knock it off. But, over the years, those images retained were retained. I mean, we had the school buses, I drove up into school every day behind one. School buses did, in fact, have the Confederate flag on it. The athletic director's papers, you know, his notebooks, had the Rebel on it. The Rebel name is tied up with the Confederacy, and with the, all the things that surround it. One of the, and you know what I'm tied, I'm tied about racism, and I'm tied about the Rebel, the connection with the Rebel flag, and with the name Rebel, and the Confederacy, and what the Confederacy stood for, it's all intricately together. And this issue isn't going to go away. The significant thing for me, I went through this discussion back in the nineties, the significant thing for me in this particular discussion is, that it was brought forth by citizens who had recently come to the town. And you talk about the public image, your responsibility for the public image, these citizens who come to town, the first thing they see is the Rebels, and they connect it with the negative connotations surrounding that. Now, changing the, the name, or rebranding the name is going to be a very difficult thing, and I don't think we should do it. For example, the school colors, a Confederate gray and light blue, Confederate light blue, the, the colors of the Confederate uniforms of the Confederate officers. So long as you have the Rebels, the school colors, et cetera, to get tied together, you've got this image of racism in this, in the town, that we're projecting. I think that's wrong. I know it's a hard decision, but sometimes leaders have to make hard decisions, not popular ones. And that's what I'm asking you to do. I think that the, I feel so strongly about this, because we're getting a more diverse community. And I point out, you know, when we talk about diversity, and we talk, all that sort of stuff. The thing that I point out whenever I speak on this subject, is that the only minority in this country that has been brought here forcibly is the African-Americans. They're the only minority who have had by law, not been allowed to go to school, not been allowed to teach and to read, and treated as property, even in our constitution, they're treated as property. So, this is a serious issue, not one that's just going to go away, or because we, we don't understand it, we don't understand what we're projecting. Something that I, I wouldn't want to be sitting in your seats, okay, because it's a tough decision. I would ask you to drop the name. If you drop the name, what happens? If they talked about costs, I, I've been, you know, I've been bombarded with people talking to me about this thing. Well, Bob, you're wrong, it's too costly, you didn't not change the name, or change the name. If you, if you keep the name, you have the problem of the school colors. Just look around. There are all the light blue that you got, okay? If you, if you drop the names, you just drop the name, from an economic point of view. If you keep the name and have to change the school colors, you then are in conflict with the, with the city and their colors, okay? So it's, it's a, it's a no-win situation. People are talking, I've been, you know, people are talking about mascots and this stuff. You have a good SB symbol right now. We can find a mascot if you, if you want to, I don't think it's necessary. But the first thing is, what are we going to have of our mascot? I would suggest, I would recommend, I'm strongly recommending to you that you drop this name of Rebels, and we project in the future, something different. And it doesn't, so we just get rid of this thing. It's been hanging around since nineteen sixty three, one, two. There's pictures in the paper, the Confederate flags, and the kids on the field. That's true, I've been there. I was, I was sat in a football field in nineteen seventy-two, I came back from, you know, I came home on leave, went to the ballgame, and was shocked to see the, the flag come on the field. The flag was on the field when I was teaching. Admittedly, in the eighties and nineties, it phased out to some degree, but the image is there, and it's not going to go away. And if we want to project an, an image of supporting the negative aspects of racism, then we just keep the name and keep the colors and go on the way we want. But I fully expect to see this, if you do, I fully expect to see it come up again. Thank you. That's my last word.
Thank you. Other comments? Yes?
My name's Greg Weaver, I'm old enough to be their grandfather. I was one of the ones that actually started this whole thing, back in July, front page for him. I moved here from, gradually over many years from south, I lived in Mobile, Alabama, when I was your age, sitting in school, whose nickname was also Rebels, who also had the rebel flag, and had all the purposes of the weather. Serious, and I, and listened to all this stuff, and I, if we, if we were to say that none of that ever happened in the past, that it never had the Confederate flag, and the school name was just the Rebels all these years, from somebody from the outside, that name by itself, without the history of anything else, brings back the major definition of what that means to Americans in this, grew up in Vermont. And, leaving, there's a lot of people in this country that didn't grow up in Vermont, because Vermont's still pretty small. I just think it's an important name for schools in this day and time. I wasn't surprised at all to hear the students supporting it like you did. I think I would have done the same thing in the sixties, about the Rebels, when I was in school in Mobile. I don't think you can, I don't think you'll ever be able to rebrand the name. You can rebrand the name internally, yes, to your students, to your teachers, to your parents, to the community. But how do you rebrand the name outside of South Burlington? Somebody that flies in from Europe, somebody that drives in from California. Are you going to have a rebranding class, where everybody moves, or comes to the county line, and rebrands, so they all know what Rebels means? It's going to be in the paper every month, so people that move here every month will say, hey, Rebels does not mean the Confederacy, it never did, it means this. The effort you're going to spend rebranding, and having all the classes that he was talking about, you'll probably spend more time and money than simply changing the name. That's all I have to say. I'm sorry, I'm late at sleep. Again, my name's Greg Weaver, and I'm, like I said, the grandfather.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Meredith Mason, and I'm a student, senior, at South Burlington High School, and I'm speaking on behalf of keeping the Rebel name. So I moved to South Burlington from Burlington in, before, until my eighth grade year. And I actually didn't associate the Rebel name with the Confederacy until this issue was brought up recently. My mother, who was from Connecticut, she, her and I were discussing it as well, and she really, until this was brought up by the school board and recently, she didn't really make the association. And to me, the, the fact that this was brought up at all was kind of surprising, because the Rebel community has been nothing but welcoming and absolutely wonderful. It's been a wonderful place to go to high school, and it's honestly just the community, and the students, and the teachers, and everyone that I've been associated with since moving here, has been just probably like, the best place in the world to possibly go to high school and finish up growing up. As far as rebranding the name goes, I think that it might, as you said, be challenging to rebrand the Rebel name as, I mean, as anyone could imagine, that's a hard thing to rebrand, but I do think that through the community that is represented by, currently by the Rebel name, I think that reforming, or re, maybe just repurposing the name, rebuilding the name. I think that this Rebel name means so much to the students of current and future generations, and I think that this is something that needs to be preserved, and maybe, like, I, I enjoyed the ideas of maybe having more classes, and maybe changing mascots and things like that, because I really feel like this name is something that can be restructured, and maybe can have a better meaning, because it really does mean so much to this amazing community that I've been so honored to be a part of. So I just wanted to thank everyone, obviously, for their opinions, and I just wanted to support, or voice-wise, support keeping the Rebel name.
Other brief comments? Yes, sir in the back?
Yeah, I have one more.
Hold on, hold on, I'll be right back here.
So, I just want to say that I think the Rebel name means so much to all of us here, is because our mascot is the only mascot that has a purpose behind it. The C D U's mascot, the Red Hawks, or Rice's Green Knights, those don't stand for anything like, significant, but as Thomas talked about, there's a broad definition of Rebels, and a Rebel is someone who stands up for what they believe in, and that's something that I think we definitely embrace in South Burlington High School. We're standing up for what we believe in, in the Rebel name, and I think that's something that we want to have as a community, standing up for what we believe in. In, in the past, with the Rebels and the Civil War, what they stand up and believed in is not right, but what other Rebels have stood up and believed, believed in, in democracy in the seventeen hundreds, during the American Revolution, that was right. But I just want to say that the Rebels is a significant name to us, because it stands for something that we all believe in, and we want to have something continue on in the community. That's all.
Thank you. Very brief comments?
Yeah, super quick. My name's Ryan Sargent, sophomore in South Burlington High School. Down south, they have well-known college, Ole Miss, Rebels. And if they don't change our name, I don't think we should either.
Other comments? Nerali, did, oh, right back in the room, sorry?
My name is Rachel Stone, I am a senior at South Burlington High School. And yes, South Burlington did have a negative connotation back in the past with the Confederacy, but I'd like us just all to think about what the word Rebel means now. And people don't necessarily associate it with those hardships and hard times during the Civil War. If you look through history, you learn about all these great people, like Martin Luther King Junior, or Rosa Parks, Rebels, that are standing up and doing the right thing, and doing what they believe in. And if we can, you know, rebrand our name to represent that, instead of this negative connotation that we are getting from the public, I think it would help us move forward as a community as a whole, because we don't have that negative connotation anymore. And if we can focus on the positives, they will ultimately outweigh the negatives.
Thank you. Yes, sir?
I'm broken up through a freshman at the high school, and I'm speaking in favor of keeping the name, because, yes, we have negative relationships to the name, but also, like, if you think about it, those two kids that did that, they had second chances, and they're probably living a great life right now, or doing something important, but that was because of time and progression. And if we keep the name now, and, you know, time will tell, we'll have them come out of it. But if we do choose to drop it, I think I should, all we have to do about all the resources, all the resources that we've been able to put money into, to let the Rebel name spread throughout the community, and into just Vermont itself. That's all.
Thank you. Nerali, did you want to offer some comments?
Yeah, I just wanted to start off by saying that I'm really fortunate to be on the school board in such an impressive district, and to the students who've shown such compassion for South Burlington by coming here. I'd just like to remind everyone that regardless of the school board's decision, or what your peers have shared tonight, let's remember that nothing will affect the passionate and empowered young men and women we are. Regardless of anyone's personal stance, I'd like to encourage the high school to continue this discussion, and help give every student a platform to articulate themselves. Being on the school board, I've been really privileged to listen, interact, and learn from community members, and I encourage you to do the same, to seek out the resources and express the truth you believe in. Thank you.
Thanks, Nerali. I can't quite see around the corner, I don't know if there's any folks that want to comment back here, but we'll kind of offer one more opportunity for anyone. Yes? If you could move over so we can see you. Thank you.
I do not talk in public, so this is really, a really strong in favor of this. My name's Lynn Kynock, and I am an alum of South Burlington High School. Way back in the seventies, when I was in school, I never had any, the Rebel name never, ever went to the Confederacy, and back then, we- went to Confederacy and back then, we were very proud of being the Rebels. The, the, we didn't have a mascot back then either. It was a little Rebel guy, that we had a little sticker on our shirts that said Little Rebel Guy, but that was it. I think this is an easy decision. I think you've got all the support here from the kids saying the same exact things that we don't have that connotation and, I don't know, that's it.
Seeing no other comments, unless I'm not seeing. I think, let's kinda recap kinda where we at, where we're at from a board perspective. This was a meeting, we had asked for additional input largely from administration and some student deliberations as well. Any, any other gaps in terms of board's feedback and information that you would like to see or consider on a going forward basis? I think the, the steps the board can take at this point, I think we need to, we've gotten some feedback on policy governance, so I think the steps are take action, which would really be a formal vote of the board, or not take action. We could also direct the administration to follow any or all of the recommended steps that have come forward or add to that list if we, if we saw fit. Or do nothing, correct? I think those, those are the gamut of actions that could be taken. So I think the next step is we're gonna put this on the October twenty-first agenda and we will make a decision at that time whether to warn it for action or not, or we can post it with pending action, I guess. I think that would be the appropriate posting on that. All right, any other feedback?
I think, I mean, I would just add, it's, this is not an easy que, uh, issue to, to deal with. I think that people who associate the Rebel name with the negative connotations with the Civil War, with slavery, with the Jim Crow era and oppression and such, yeah, they're, they have a right to be offended if, if that's the way you're looking at this particular term. But on the other hand, this term has developed over the last twenty, thirty years to have very positive associations that we look to develop in, in our, our students. You know, well, to an extent, we want them to question the authority unless they're questioning Mr. Burke or, or their dad. But, but we don't want them to be conformist, you know, and, and these are associated with the Rebel name and it's a very positive association. So I, this is what I've, I've been weighing and having, getting lots of input from both sides and we'll appreciate a little bit more time to, to ponder where I ultimately come on.
I, I would just say that I appreciate the administration's report. We have talked a little bit about the value of the education piece and it was nice to see some, some talking points about how that could play out if you chose to go that way. And also, I would just comment on the community and the students as a whole, I really, really appreciate all the, the input, the thought that had led to that, whether it be the podcast or the people that are coming here today. This is a really challenging conversation and there are valid points on both sides and I really appreciate the dialogue.
All right. Thank you. We'll move on to agenda item number nine, update on master planning and visiting.
Yep. So let me, I'm gonna turn the screen on Elizabeth and I'm sorry, but it's always to your back, I'm sorry. Maybe give a little pause for that.
I just wanted a person to say thank you to, you guys.
Thank you, Thomas.
Is there anything else from a student perspective that we could do that?
I think there's always something that you can do, but I would say work with Mr. Burke and your administrators and your colleagues and Narali and, yeah.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Thomas.
Is the, is this where your report gonna be online? Is that gonna be a little?
Yeah, I will post it up. I will put it up. I'm not sure when I'm gonna get to that, but I will do it within the next couple of days. I'll post up administrative recommendation that was provided to the school board.
Yeah, just so I can have that for tonight.
I don't know, do you have a copy, Meg?
Of the recommendation so I can, cause that's new, first time.
Yeah, I've taken yours on mine.
My ass too.
I wrote one.
I can get you one tomorrow or, you have one?
I don't have one, but I'll cover up.
They got some lingering and probably good lingering dialogue.
I didn't get a chance to have dinner, it's my dinner.
So do you have some lunch?
I got, I got two.
No, he didn't chew, he, no, he didn't chew at all, but I got three, but I had two other buddies gave me four.
You don't, you don't, you don't, you don't.
I try.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I should hope you have some people, I can't send some.
Oh, yeah.
That would be really nice. Someday in the future, we'll get on one of those boat planks. It'll fly here to the old spot.
Well, you don't even need to do that. I've got, it's good, good money.
Oh, yeah. Particularly like Addison County all the way along or.
Yeah.
Yeah. I have a friend who's devoted his life to fishing. Notice that I'm standing red.
I see that.
Oh, yeah. Wait, do you?
No, it's just, I got, she's in here. She's in the, she's, she'll be like checking here, she's like, I don't know.
Yeah. Okay, well, go ahead and get started. Thanks for allowing a little transition time there. So to the school board, this is a continuation of the September sixteenth meeting and again, I provided my recommendation for a single consolidated elementary school with other phases that would address shortcomings in the district up to, including the high school. What I know is that, and what I expected was it was not yet going to be completely enough. The conversation is important to stay engaged. I wanna walk you through some slides here that help affirm for you why I think the decision, why a decision is needed. And I'm gonna say proactively, the work that you've done and allowed with master planning and visioning and task force, the work that you've been allowing me to do and, and other employees within the district, I think is important in being proactive to the future. I wanna recognize John Stewart and Annette Harden who basically have done all of this work. Again, we've guided along the way or I have, but generally that's from a little far and, and they've done a great job for, for me in putting together this. Behind all of this is some significant data that certainly for those of you who would like to see the analytics that go with the plot points of this, we'd be happy to get it to you. Let me walk you through this, there'll be times where I'm gonna ask John or Annette to just offer any additional comments that perhaps I've left off, but let me start. John Stewart, perfect. This, this slide represents enrollment and enrollment, the enrollment picture K to eight. What I've said before is that our enrollments are fairly steady with a slight downward trend. What this shows you again, the, the totals K to eight are on the top, starting back in two thousand and ten at fifteen, ten, and forecasted to the future, twenty twenty-five at thirteen, eight, six. Some of you may say that's big. Again, that's what I've used as a kind of downward trend over time. We're currently here at fourteen sixty-five and the projection obviously shows that, that work. You can see, and we're gonna have another slide that will provide some additional, you see some ups and downs in each of these, but again, overall, you see that trend. John or Annette, before I move on, anything? All right, good.
Can I ask, can I ask?
Absolutely, board members.
So does the total population number include like tuition students from the islands and stuff like that?
So, remember, one of the, so this is trying to really isolate the three elementary schools, but we felt important to include the middle school. Currently, tuition students, we have very, very few. I don't know if actually, Annette or John, did we include those, there, I don't think we have anyone in the, in the, right, so there's zero. If they were, then they would've been included in the previous years in two thousand, back to two thousand and ten. Again, we've had probably at the highest, we've probably had, I'm guessing, five or six at the most.
Yeah, we currently have quite a few students from north here, I believe, a whole of six, but that's unusual.
Yeah.
Okay.
So David, the, the raw data on the, the middle school only, if you look at current out to two thousand twenty-five, what's the current enrollment in the middle school and what is that projected to be?
Yep, we can get that for you.
If we could just break, it's hard to see on a paper, but the total.
And again, I, I, I sent Annette and John through like a variety of things I wanted, you know, totally inclusive, so there is, this is again, this is part of why I'm walking you through. Yep.
Dave, one more question. If you're getting the, what you've done, the, the source of the forecasting is based on what?
So the, the source of the forecasting was done in concert with master planning, visioning, and was done by Cropper, who provided that demographic study.
Yes.
And again, I think fair to say, many of us could poke at demographic analyses, but they're definitely grounded in, you know, scientifically based processes, even though you and I can say, that doesn't seem to make sense.
Yeah.
Again, they are using these models all over the country and there's some validation components, so it's Cropper.
What's, what's the error rate on it? I mean, is there a plus or minus?
Um, I don't, I don't know that. I know that it is in the Cropper report, there's an error percentage associated, Martin, I don't know, certainly can share that with you on the Cropper and I know we're taking notes, yep.
So the current for this year, Elizabeth, in the middle school is five thirty-two. It's projected for two thousand twenty-five to be four ninety-five.
So did this take into account the various development plans that are on the books and that we anticipate coming down the road for new housing in South Burlington?
It did, and so, yeah, try to be short there. They, they looked at the, kind of the city plan, they looked at some of those. I, I, again, I, I, we feel that there was some poking that we would think, that doesn't seem to make sense. The number of houses and the transfer of the, the students didn't seem to play out, but that's again, all part of their, their plan based on live births. There's a very significant, you know, formula that they use around numbers of women that are going to bear children and what that looks like across the country and in, in our area.
What about the change in population in the Chamberlain district?
Yep, similarly, we, again, part of the demographer, I'm getting, I'm probably, I mean, I, I can come back to you a little bit more of the analysis of the study, but they were very well informed of the current demographic configuration and changes of, of the Chamberlain community as well with the, the city center and some of the, the different areas.
So just for the board, a quick math on this is, over that nine-year period, the middle school goes down thirty-seven and the aggregate of the elementary schools just by default goes down forty-two.
That's right, and that's consistent with what we've previously talked about actually in, in our enrollment numbers when we were talking about Rick Marcot Central School. The next one, we're gonna go, there's a few more here that just, different ways of looking at it for you. Again, this kinda maps that, we'll say slight downward trend in enrollment out to two thousand twenty-five, top line being Tuttle, these other two lines, middle, very consistent around the Orchard and, and Rick Marcot and then Chamberlain, obviously here. There are some things that we definitely know that, you know, slight upticks, for instance, when we were in or holding with, with Rick Marcot was some of the things that came along around choice for students, so we had some migration from one school to another. So again, although it's not significant and it doesn't show it on time there. So again, this represents kind of a line graph of where we are with enrollment. Questions? Additions, Annette or John? No? Kathy has a question, Elizabeth.
I'm just wondering if you consider getting a second opinion on the report for the enrollment? It, I, it just looks like there's an awful lot of construction going on and I would be so afraid to jump without actual proof. I think it's excellent to have a plan, but I, I think to move too quickly could, you know, we'd be shooting ourselves in the foot and coming up short of space.
So again, Kathy, I would say again to the board that these are some decisions that they might want. I, I would say that there's a few things. We have the Cropper report that was done for the master planning and visioning work. We also in the past have used Bill Smith, who's now retired, he took it upon himself, he trained demographer, very well educated, absolutely loves, and we have his trend data as well. What I would tell you is that those forecasted futures, I mean, been very, very accurate to date. So there's a high percentage of reliability with Bill Smith's report, although it's becoming older now, and, and this. And in fact, some of the predictions that are moving forward, we're seeing. We are seeing however, some of the flux and change between, i.e. Rick Marcot School, fourth grade, and then the downward turn numbers at Chamberlain, which represents significantly smaller class sizes. So, I, I mean, I think it's always good, we're always looking at the data, always poking at it as we, as we move forward, looking at it and reevaluating. That will always be the work, I think, of, for, for me on behalf of the board to look at kind of the, the, the future and the demographic projections. So again, to the board, if they, if they feel like, as we look at it, there's concerns, that, that certainly can come back to them. So number of staff per school, and this is again, I think, important. Again, I want you to continue to think about, we're gonna pull these together on a slide, which I think will provide some importance, but remember, we have a slight, we're downward turning enrollment, but yet we don't have a slightly downward turning staffing. So this is not just teachers, this is all staff and we have, and again, I know, I know it's gonna come back, it's gonna be like, what have you been doing about this, David? But part of this is where we have disparate numbers in different classes, we have different needs, it creates this ebb and flow in kind of our maintaining of, of the, of the current staffing. Now, obviously Chamberlain is pretty flat, you know, Orchard has been increasing, again, we've added some resources there to help identify some of the areas. Rick Marcot, obviously, we've had some, some reductions there, but you know where we are today.
So when you define, if somebody was looking at this chart, how would you define staff? Is this a fully burdened model?
Yes, so this includes, this includes, yeah, John, you're gonna crack me, I know you are, but all teachers, all custodians, all nutrition services, our support staff, it excludes our district personnel in there. So people, our district folks that support, you know, facilities, electrical, those types of folks are not included.
So how about, are there any personnel that are shared on schools?
Uh, we do have some and, and we've worked hard to exclude them, but let me give John and Annette a little opportunity to make sure I'm grounded here.
Yeah, these are staff who directly are assigned to the school, so it's not fully burdened. It's, it wouldn't include transportation, who serve all the schools, business office, superintendent's office, and it doesn't include IT because they're not assigned to schools either. So it's, it, if you take these numbers, you go back to our budget books, the fifty-some number that's there for Chamberlain will tie with our two thousand and ten book for teachers, paraprofessionals, administrators, and school nurse, that kinda thing, guidance.
That's all FTEs, the call?
That's right. So, and if, if, if a guidance counselor, for instance, or a music teacher splits between the schools, they're definitely included in the portion that they're there.
So fully burdened and apples to apples, it was what we've tried to create here.
Well, it's not fully burdened, but it's directly assigned FTEs.
Right, right.
Is that accurate?
Yes, that's exactly right.
Yeah, no, right. Apples to apples, yeah. Okay, thank you, John.
And did we, did we do a calculation of directly assigned FTEs per, per student?
You're gonna see some of this tie in and, and, and towards the end, I don't know that I'm totally gonna be able to get to that point, Elizabeth, so there's again, maybe some follow-up recommendations that you'd like to see. We don't tie one in that's directly per pupil, student to staff ratio on a slide.
Not on a slide, it's in the budget.
In the budget, yes. Okay. So this is, this is our total budget and again, this is our three elementary schools. Obviously, we're in the year. Obviously, we're in the year, um, two thousand and sixteen, and, um, we've had some increases, obviously, to bring some resources up, you see at Orchard. What we've done forwardly, um, or what I said, done, and I had done, they've taken the increase from two thousand and ten to current, and then they've applied that forwardly, on, on the, on the, out to two thousand twenty-five. We're gonna start to pull in and gonna show, um, we're gonna show, um, the implications of the cap in just a moment. Um, but I, I wanna just pause here to make sure you understand the moving, the moving forward.
I, I guess I have to ask why two percent? That seems awfully optimistic, and I wonder if we can see, without telling you exactly why, I mean, can we see a two percent and a four percent, so we kind of get a range to look at?
Yep, we can, we can do that. What we, what we know is upon us for the next two years, budget cycles, is one point seven-two, which is under Act forty-six, the cap. And so what we did is we, we applied the, the one seven-two cap for the two years, and then going forward, we just did two percent after that.
And this is with the assumption that we're going to be under the cap even with the projected healthcare increase?
Well, again, I think that your, your, your direction to me is that there's gonna be no, there's going to be no discussions going over the cap. That's my, that's my interpretation from, from you, um, I, I believe as a director. But that's, that's what this represents is kind of current spending up to a point, then moving forward, one seven-two, then after the two years, we've made the hypothetical, again, what, we don't know about what will happen at the, at the, at the legislature going forward is two percent.
And is, stewardship is not in here by facility, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So we've got, basically over the next nine years, we have, I'm just ballparking it without seeing the numbers, but it looks like in aggregate, a budget that's going from around thirteen million to operate these three schools to at the low end, it would be about fourteen and a half million. And if you bracket it, Martin, and add another two percent to that base, we're kind of at that fifteen million.
That's right.
Okay.
Okay, thanks, John. So this is stewardship costs. Again, we've thought differently, we, we, Annette and John applauded different ways. This is one that we think has, you know, the most clarity, um, by year. And remember, it, we, we have over time worked to try to, what we would say, you know, re-level or try to organize those. But, you know, when you have big, big, big items that come in front of you, like a major roof, you know, those are, those are higher dollar items, so they, they show, uh, in, in this way. But what this represents again is a total of, uh, of eight hundred and forty-two thousand dollars between seventeen and nineteen, and then you can see the grand total, how it adds up. Again, the cost of maintaining our buildings are important for, for the, for weighing into this equation. And, um, again, we, we've provided, uh, you know, that, that visual for you. I don't, again, John or Annette, anything to add?
Yes, um, where we have been able to put stewardship costs in the operating budget, for instance, the example is in two thousand sixteen, Orchard roof this summer was about a hundred and five thousand dollars, and so that's the red block on two thousand sixteen. We won't be able to do that under a cap or just minimal repairs. And so what comes out will be some requests for bond, bonded debt to cover these. And yet the, the, um, graph here is gonna change, because you don't wanna have bonded, a bond for a hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars. There's also the high school, the middle school, and the athletic field. So, but this is projects we have on the docket in current estimates.
We can come back to some of these too as we, as we finish up here. So, um, we're gonna do this individually by school and what, what the orange line brings in, or the top line brings in the cap limit. This line brings in the cap limit. And so what, in the past, what I alluded to is to try to think about the conjoining graphs and getting to what I would say a decision point, to help folks understand the urgency, I believe, of doing something. To do nothing, we're gonna end up in what I've said, and this plays it out, perhaps not as accurately as I would have said in nineteen, but certainly it shows it. And what this demonstrates again is the, um, the work that we do is highly embedded with salary. There's no question, and we provide benefits to our employees. This is not just teachers, this is all of our employees, important to know, all of our staff, um, at that building that we talked to, that Rick Marcot. And so salaries and benefits, the, um, all other is what we would say, those other peripheral things that we, that we do in, at Rick Marcot. And you can see here in eighteen nineteen, we're, you know, we're starting to see, or twenty nineteen, when I say eighteen nineteen? I'm trying. I just had my thirtieth reunion and they're gonna have their two-hundredth, and so, yeah, that's probably what I'm thinking about. But, um, twenty eighteen, you start to see where we get into, in twenty nineteen, we get into its trouble spot, where we're gonna have to stabilize behind the cap, and certainly in twenty twenty, some of those opportunities are going to have to, we're going to struggle with diminishment of these opportunities and these programs are gonna have to happen now. This does not take into account, obviously, if we make a reduction in staff or we have significant changes in staff. That said, this is stagnant and this has some projections moving forward, as we talked about before, with, with that two percent on top of the one seven-two.
Lots of questions.
Yep.
Is that green is below the line? Is that the difference between the cap and the top of the line?
Correct.
Is that green below?
Go ahead, John.
Uh, we'll start with two thousand and ten, because it's, it's a process. The salaries in two thousand and ten were about two point eight million dollars and benefits were about a million dollars. All other costs, including utilities, school supplies, et cetera, were in that white green box. And then we've allocated debt service for the ninety-five, ninety-six addition and update to the central school. So as you go through, the debt service is a fixed number and then it goes away, because it's, the debt goes away in two thousand seventeen.
Yep.
The all other is everything that's not salary and benefits. So even, even from two thousand and ten to sixteen, that's, that's been shrinking. Sixteen, sixteen is the last day where there's, is, is the budget. So, um, that's the budget. From seventeen on, what we did was we projected forward increases in salaries, meaning total, uh, amount spent, based on the increases of the prior six years from two thousand and ten to sixteen, and projected that forward. We also did that with benefits, because we had a, um, we have, had a history of increases of benefits of around four percent. So we projected the salary and benefits out. And then plotted the line where the one point seven-two cap, and then we used two percent afterward, is that orange line. And then it's not, it's not how this would ever play out, but we wanted to see, well, if we continued operating the way we were, where would we get in trouble with the cap? And, and how much would we be in trouble? So we, we just lumped that into all other.
You folks, you keep on saying the cap, and the cap is specifically, the only cap that's out there right now is done after next, I understand you made an assumption, but, but it just, you know.
Well, the principle was that the legislature had a two percent spending, uh, cap for the whole state. So we, we used two percent because that was, for two years.
Right.
I don't know what state legislature is gonna do it in the next year, so.
So again.
Conservative, but we should have a range, but, but that was, I had a question on it, is, does this take into account the, the potential that we are, have a new normal as far as retirements, given the demographics of our teaching staff and that we're gonna be seeing perhaps a higher percentage of retirements over the next number of years?
It only takes that into account in, as far as the, the effect on sixteen, in two thousand and sixteen?
Yeah, I guess, 'cause, because that would seem to be pretty important, 'cause even, even this year, we've ended up with more money than we thought in, as far as for salaries, because we had a lot of retirements and then hired less experienced and therefore teachers were not paid as much. And if we're gonna see that still going forward, I think that should be worked into the.
Right, I mean, from my perspective, and again, I wasn't doing, I, I had input in what I wanted to try to, and again, we were extremely, I asked to be conservative. I didn't wanna go and, you know, inflate things that made this rosier than it is. I think, you know, when we get into the, the benefits and, and the salaries, you know, as we turn over more senior teachers, you know, that, that, you know, the distribution between benefits and, and salaries sometimes begin to make up for themselves pretty quickly as newer people come in and need, you know, more coverage, um, et cetera. So that, that, that metric, we know, we didn't play that out either. We kind of held, held things constant and, and moved them that way. But you're right, every year, there's gonna be a slight recalibration. I don't think though, that it's enough to be able to say, we can, you know, we're, we're good.
Let me ask this a slightly different then. Are you looking at what we budgeted for salaries and benefits or actual for, for the graph?
Oh, what we budgeted.
What was in the budget as opposed to actual? Right, well, I mean, that, that.
And again, I think as we move forward.
That's fair, you know, it's a fair way to do it. I'm just wondering if we should also know, given.
I still don't understand what this green below the line is.
Isn't it just an offset of the red?
It is.
Yes, that's it, so basically.
What, what it takes to make the red line.
That's right. In two thousand and twenty, we're gonna need to make, make these offsets to make that work, you know, similarly, so, to me.
Given this methodology, that would continue to become negative.
Right, obviously.
More increasingly negative.
Right.
Or we would reduce salaries. There's not a whole lot you can do with benefits, because, I mean.
No, you can adjust the others in it, I mean, to the extent that you can reduce the red line, the top red line down, the green lines gets shorter, I understand.
Did you put, did you put the, um, the known stewardship projects into central?
Not, no, not going forward.
So this is not fully burdened for stewardship?
It's not, no.
Well, part of that is if you, if, if you make the change, you know, again, they also, under Act forty-six, the whole, you know, stewardship component has some different complexities to that as well. Um, again, some of these are, I mean, I, I think we get to clarifying fully burdened, trying to show this in a consistent manner that, that we can't.
Well, and I think, I think the way the board's gonna have to look at this in terms of master visioning and planning is we know there are stewardship investments that would be required in any status quo scenario. We will have to continue to invest in the maintenance of our schools. So how that's funded may be a different scenario, but we will make those investments, whether it's central or, I mean, in a status quo scenario. And that's, that to me would become the rationale for looking at an alternative that might avoid some costs, might save some money, might drive some efficiencies. But, um, at some point, I do think by facility, those ought to be layered in.
And so we, we can, we can do that. I actually talked, I, I asked that we not, I didn't wanna include this, because it showed, you know, very disparate methodology, because, you know, you need a roof and it, it throws things askew from, from what I'm trying to show you. Certainly, I think further, would further highlight the need for a decision point, you know, appropriately. So again, this is central school, we're gonna go on to, um, to Orchard. Again, Orchard, um, you start to see that, again, twenty nineteen, um, similar, similar makeup. I don't need to speak to this unless you have specific questions. Again, kind of the same methodology applied. Okay? And then Chamberlain, Chamberlain, actually, we've made some reductions and they don't, they don't hit a decision point in this regard because of some of the reductions that we've made along the way, and their increases have been, you know, fairly, fairly flat. So this doesn't reach into, uh, to that. So that's, again, this, again, in transparency and providing you the data, um, they don't reach a decision point, given this methodology up to two thousand and twenty-five.
So given these, given these three schools, does this data suggest something about reallocating something among schools?
Certainly could, I think Dan's right. When you talk about redistricting, this would be the type of, you know, this would be the type of, um, slide information that we would use, but, you know, I, I don't know that you've got a lot of wiggle room either necessarily, um, and you would have to, you know, analyze that based on what you would be able to take away or to redistrict. But you're, you're right, yeah. And then the last, this next slide pulls in all three, and, um, looking at where we headed. And so, you know, when, when the board said, you know, you needed more data, and I know you're still not yet convinced, we have other components that we're working on, which is with our real estate investment firm, folks to factor in, what are the benefits that will happen in city center and with the comprehensive plan? What are those things going to matriculate to be for cost benefit? Those are important things and we're currently working on getting that information. Um, but nonetheless, what I'm trying to present here is that we are in a place where I believe we need to proactively have a plan, so that we don't walk into, you know, twenty twenty and find ourselves having to make reductions in what we think are important, um, attributes that our district currently provides to our students that we think are appropriate and good, and we wanna continue. And what I presented in, in, in my recommendation is actually trying to slightly increase the opportunities as a result of consolidation, as well as upgrades to the high school for the continuation of twenty-first century learning.
So is, is the next step, I hope that the one el, new elementary school proposal will have something like this that takes into account whatever new debt service we may have, which we'll have to make some assumptions of how much money we would collect. I mean, it could just be five million, ten million, twenty million dollars, what we expect to collect from sales of schools and stuff, and then cut, so we can look at it for comparison, is that?
So I, you're right, Martin, I haven't, I haven't gone there. Again, this was a continuation of the sixteen. Again, I can only handle so much information myself and only put so much on.
No, no, I understand, I'm just saying down the, down the road.
Again, that's, that would be a direction from you, the board. Again, this was an important step for me. Um, there was a lot of information that I put in front of you on the, on the sixteenth of September, and what I heard from you was, was, you know, thanks for the information, we still, we need more. I'm not this, and again, for me as well, having the data that helps affirm the need to proactively make some decisions on behalf of the school district, I think, are upon us. And I'm, I'm wanting to say to you, and again, I, my methodology was trying to stay consistent. I wasn't, quite honestly, I wasn't one hundred percent sure that, you know, twenty nineteen or twenty twenty came out to be. And I certainly, again, we have some additional things that we'll add to you, but certainly, as I look at this, you know, this twenty twenty-one starts to have, I'm really, I become concerned for, for the district. And perhaps as we, as we, if we did, if we did nothing, again, that do nothing isn't really the right, the right word, 'cause we're always a district that's always trying to do good things and we'll always, we'll always be, you know, at least your administrator, trying to always make sure that's happening. But you, you know, um, the kind of pressures that are in the, in the state right now.
And this, I mean, this is very interesting, taking aside what we're talking about for consolidation. To me, it also says, well, the question I have as well, is consolidating into one school the answer? Or are there other ways to address this conservative, uh, projection as far as?
Well, and this looks, this looks exclusively at the operating expense side, so I think this addresses the issue that came up at the board meeting, where we wanted to figure out the operating baseline for each of the facilities. And I think we, we have that here, if, if we burn it with at least the stewardship, and you can argue whether you do anything with twenty-first century learning, but at the elementary level, that's not as significant. I think some of the things that are not in here are the questions the board has had around, the, either maintaining or improving the quality of education provided. And I think, you know, by way of example, and I'm just, I just kind of ballpark these off here, but if you look at central school and you look at this, just for two thousand and sixteen, and you look at the, um, staff to student ratio, again, aggregated for the, um, the, um, dedicated FTEs, it's, it's approximately three hundred and fifty students divided by sixty staff, and I may be wrong on the numbers, but that comes out to five point eight. And at Chamberlain, it's about two twenty divided by fifty, so that's four point four. Now arguably, you can say, is that good or bad, um, in terms of quality? We know the class sizes are getting small, the staffing flexibility is getting, uh, difficult at Chamberlain. But if you layer in also, um, airport issues, um, the declining residents and what that might mean toward, we, I think we have an enrollment number here for Chamberlain, whether we believe it's. we believe it's accurate or not, we can decide on that. Uh, but we do have quality of, of education. You can, you can argue the noise is going to be the same one way or the other, but I don't think we know that. I think, I think the, the neighborhood task force that's in place will provide some information there. Uh, but equity issues, for instance, when you start to become substantially smaller, do we have, uh, you know, a higher sub rate? Do we, I, I don't know. Some of those more qualitative issues, um, that might affect the education we deliver there. And that, I'm not saying to lay out Chamberlain necessarily, but, um, there, there are data here beyond, beyond the baseline operating expenses that I think could be articulated around the quality of education we're providing at each of the facilities beyond the expense of providing that.
Can I ask one real quick?
Absolutely.
Back to the budget, uh. So, so is it in the others, all other spending for utilities, water, electricity, heat, et cetera, for each of these facilities? Is that included in the budget for each of these?
Yes.
How about technology?
No.
He said no one IT and no transportation.
Okay, so, but it's in the green bar or something like that? Or where, where do I see that? Okay.
It's in the green bar. It's all.
All other.
Supplies. And, and, yeah, utilities mostly.
So, I mean, one of the things I think in contrast, and again, this, this plays, uh, positively to the middle school. When we look at the staffing levels at the middle school, and, and again, this is a generalization, although accurate, and Carson's here. But typically, we, we have been at, we've been in middle school, um, one could say we perhaps could shrink, uh, from our eight core teachers to seven. But by and by, we've, we have been an eight core teacher per grade level at the middle school for a long, long time. And that has allowed for, you know, those fluctuations where when you have three, it hasn't. It, it obviously does not, and we're, we're seeing some of those effects more rapidly happening. But certainly for some of you who've been on now three, four years, you're, you're seeing, and maybe somebody would say we've seen it all the time, particularly at the elementary. We've always struggled with kindergarten enrollment, but that's because we go kind of between the seven classroom teachers and sometimes we got to go up to the, to the, to the eight or nine even. And that's been, uh, in play. I think that those, those, the, the graphs play out to, to indicate that you're going to have, um, higher likelihood of that happening on an ongoing basis, unless we do, unless we do, in fact, redistrict. And again, that's not easy because, um, you know, there's, there's complicated factors around, around doing that as well.
But to me, I mean, a compelling discussion with the community would be around, um, in order to preserve the targeted class sizes that we have, this is the incremental expense of doing that versus this might be either a redistricting alternative or a consolidation alternative or something that preserves what I think is a value benefit, um, with, with some range. But, um, you know, we clearly ran into an issue with the fourth grade this year, uh, and that, that may be a way to articulate also that if you're looking at, you know, budgets that would impact programming, class size would certainly be one of those at the elementary level. So some discussion should be around preserving class sizes in a, in a tighter and lower band width, for instance.
I mean, it's hard, it was hard for us. I, I've struggled with the opportunities for students and I, I initially, when I, when I delivered on the sixteenth, I, I talked about trying to have you visually image kind of the opportunities for our students. And, you know, obviously classroom experience and our core physical education, um, music, et cetera, you know, we kind of would say are the core. We've been a district though, that's been able to add some other things that, that we think are important. We've also had to take some of those away. So in, in my, uh, proposal in, in this, on the sixteenth, it talked about the, the opportunity really to stay constant on those, on those opportunities going forward. Um, the ability to, to be able to do that. Can you imagine when we, when we try to put something in like a world language program? You can't, we, we want to do it on all three. So it's, it's very difficult to do it at three locations without enduring significant expense. Um, much easier to do in a consolidated. And I come back to kind of the middle school scenario, not that that's what we want our elementary to be, but there's definitely, um, as you get in this kind of scale ratio, there's definitely an opportunity, I think, to increase, um, you know, what we believe, you know, are really important for our children as they move forward. I definitely know and have heard from the community that, you know, this large school is, is scary, you know? And I don't want to stand here and say that it, that it's, wouldn't be a large school. But what I do know is that with design, I, I have been approached by many that have said, David, you know, um, we just built a brand new school, very similar to the same situation that's happening here in South Burlington in Thalmouth, Maine. And same number of students, and the design of that school feels smaller than what we used to have when we were in a two hundred and fifty size school by the, by the design of the, of the school. And, and again, there's many, many examples of that. But I definitely know and want to acknowledge that there's some, some real concern around the size. There's also a concern around, you know, it's my, my neighborhood school. And I do think we have that. Orchard, we still have a, a nice composite of our, a neighborhood that's within walking distance, but that's changing significantly at Chamberlain. And it's really been in play, although there's a few within the, within the central, but that's really not been, it's been more of a, a community school at Rickmark. We've not, we've not been able to really totally put our name on to say it's been a neighborhood school or we're a neighborhood elementary school type district. We're not. Um, and so I'm also very, very concerned as we move forward around safety and security. I think we do a good job, but, you know, um, you know, our buildings are only, are only designed, uh, with the ability for us to manipulate them just so much. Anyway, let me, John or Annette, anything you wanted to add for the board around these? Again, my desire was not to overwhelm me with information, but to try to provide just some additional validation.
I'll take as much information as you give us.
Yeah, can we actually get the, just the, the data associated with the graphs would be helpful?
You bet. Would all of you like that?
Mm-hmm.
Be careful what you ask for.
Well, it's, yeah, it's just the numbers.
Yeah, I've actually, you know, on the, some of the slides that we have, you know, they embedded, I just really wanted to try to keep it simple and not, not get too deep. So again, thank you, John. Thank you, Annette. Thank you, board, for, for listening.
Uh, so in terms of, on the next steps, uh, I know we'll have the steering committee on the thirteenth. That will really be our opportunity to speak with the city about mutual and maybe disparate objectives. Um, is there anything between then and now, David, that we should be prepared for, for the steering committee meeting?
I, I guess, you know, I don't, I mean, I don't know. There may be a desire by the board if you would like to have some of this information. You know, again, part of, part of your methodical work that you're doing is in part related to you getting information that helps you to affirm the next step. I don't know. That, that would be one question of providing some additional information, even if it's in a handout, about some of the things that you're working through. And, and again, you've, you've gotten the report from the task force, but you were really trying to essentially, asking me to disaggregate and look at this in a different way. You may want, uh, to have me do, uh, you know, a little bit of an overview or even to provide.
I think, I think it might be helpful, um, to have, come up with a one pager that just has by facility, um, the, uh, current operating expenses, and we can describe it, you know, just caveat it anyway that you've run it here. Uh, but I would include a, an item called stewardship in there. Um, so have that for, um, a, a starting period, which would be this year's budget year and an ending period, which is nine years, the two thousand twenty-five. Um, and then bracket it, I would say with a, with a two percent and maybe with a five percent growth rate on it, um, just so that there is a by facility. I wouldn't put the growth rate on the stewardship, obviously, but on the, on the balance of the operating side of it.
What about the costs that are missing though? I'm concerned about those costs that are missing because they're significant.
You, you mean like IT and?
And transportation, that's a big cost.
Yeah, um, I don't know if we can put that, I, I mean, I think at this point, we can just highlight that they're excluded and maybe put what the aggregate two thousand sixteen budget is on those line items, so we know what the base is on it.
For the state, every year, we allocate all those costs, but it's a matter of how much time. I mean, Tuesday's the steering committee meeting.
Right.
We can put the two thousand sixteen budget, right? We could just.
Yeah, yeah, we have, we have a sheet, um, um, a legal sheet that has all the data on it already. We'll update it with the.
Perfect.
We'll update it with the stewardship plan and the five percent.
Well, I'm just thinking, if we have a starting year and then an ending year, and, and it's an order of magnitude discussion with the city around what, you know, what it will take over the next nine years to, to run the schools with a minimal amount of effort around preventative maintenance, um, on the facilities.
Sure.
And, and some guardrails around operating expense increases.
So that's, I mean, that's a little bit of, um, preparation, steering committee, and what else in preparation for the twenty-first or, or moving forward that you heard that you would like? I heard from Martin, um, the idea of pulling in what some projected numbers of a consolidated one might then look like if in fact we were to, to do that? Is that what I'm hearing? Again, part of this is we're delving into some of the work that, uh, the, our investment, our real estate investment advisors are going to start to do.
Yeah.
So I don't, I don't exactly.
They want to lose.
But that's, that's a, that's a desire. Okay. Yeah.
All right. Any other discussion, further discussion on this? All right, we'll move on to, um, item number ten, policy development on proficiency-based graduation requirements.
So this is the second reading, um, and I don't think we spent a, a significant amount of time on this last, is that right, Stuart? Did we?
Well, we, we, we made, there were, there were two sets of questions. Um, there was the question, what do the indicators look like? And I sent you, David, a linked copy, which.
I don't think I sent it to them.
To see the, the data, um, or not. I could share what one looks like tonight if people wanted to see, but that wouldn't be for every single one where, we actually have some working sheets, or actually I could go to the document, open each one, but I don't think you'd have the time to look at it. The other question was the question of whether they receive a diploma. Uh, there were a couple of suggestions, but we looked to see what we do now and what we do now is we award. So it seemed like that, that best way to look at that language was to go to the language we use now, which is that we award diplomas. So, um, that's the only, uh, other change, um, from last time. And, and if you'd like, um, I could put up like one set of indicators. I have the language arts ones for the work we're going to be doing on social studies, but there is a, uh, excuse me, on English, um, on the Friday, but there is a linked document that David can send to you.
Well, that David failed to send to them, Stuart. And you provided me a long time ago, so credit to you, that on me. Um, up to you, up to you, board. I, I would perhaps recommend that Stuart.
Is that a Google Doc?
It is, and, but we can open it publicly because, um, one of the pieces was that, you know, there are all kinds of ways the links will or will not work.
Right.
So, um, I did work with Steve Webster, so I know the document that David has now, the links should open.
I think you said.
For you to.
I think you're being kind.
No, I, I actually do think, yeah, I, I didn't.
Well, we'll make sure that you have it. It, it may be best that you, I mean, we can make sure you have it.
It basically looks like, exactly like this, only literacy would be highlighted. And you click it and you'd see the reading, English, uh, indicators.
Yes, so, I don't know what your pleasure, if you'd like, Stuart, to bring one up and have a little bit more conversation, happy to do that, or we can make sure you have it and we bring it back.
Why don't we look at one?
Sure.
You look like you're ready to pull that up, so let's do it.
Yeah.
Oh, the projector.
I knew you wanted to.
Oh, yeah, I'm, I'm seeing.
Now I gotta move again.
Oh, this, yeah, so everything's.
Bad thought.
Turn around.
So how much did we get into, uh, the last meeting on what it means to be proficient? And if kids are not proficient, how long we keep them at the high school or the middle school or the elementary school? I, I just can't remember.
I don't know that, I don't know that we did have that conversation.
So.
Yeah, I'm, I'm gonna let this, while this comes up, Martin. So, to remember that this is part of the educational quality standards, right? Regardless of what our proficiencies are, the theory would be that students, it's not about seat time, it's about proficiencies. And so the EQS actually looks at it both ways. That is through flexible pathways, a student might take shorter to go through high school or they may take longer to go through high school. Because the only seat requirements really in that, in that document are actually around physical education and health in terms of actual put in. That's why it has a particular, uh, you know, um, remember, it cites that, that law. But we believe that we do have some students now who are on kind of five-year plans, it takes them a little longer to graduate and that may grow a little. And we have about five percent who graduate in three years, and that may grow a little, but we really think that the majority of students, that the program that we will determine will, will still be for the most part, four years for most students.
So, so, I mean, that's kind of, I mean, it's relatively easy to pull off at high school, but let's go into elementary school. I mean, the flexibility and for kids, you know, being in the fifth, you know, kindergarten cohort or first grade or second grade and deeming proficiency to move on to the next grade, that's a little harder to handle because in high school, seniors are taking classes with freshmen, et cetera. So, I mean, is that an issue? I mean, is that, I mean, are we gonna, kids have to be proficient through kindergarten and if they're not proficient, they don't move on to first grade, to second grade, to third grade? I mean, how is that?
Well, this policy doesn't say that. I mean, the policy is a, is a graduation policy. I mean, right now, we have proficiency-based report cards at elementary schools and not all kids are proficient.
Right.
When they go into the next grade. And we're not changing that policy in any way. All we're saying is the end game is this.
You have to catch up in high school if there's.
Or somewhere else, or, you know, every so often a student is retained, but it would be the same kind of.
Right.
Process of.
Gotcha.
Is it beneficial for this student to quote, repeat or, you know, how to do that?
Okay, thank you.
So, I, I can't seem to make it large enough to be easy to read, so I'm gonna actually come over here and kind of, uh, read the document. This is a working document. So reading, the students comprehends, interprets, analyzes, evaluates literature or informational print, uh, print text, that is the proficiency. And the indicators are that they cite strong and thorough textual evidence to support an analyst, analyze, analysis of text, excuse me, including any applicable primary or secondary sources and determine both explicit and implicit meaning. So this is the graduation standard. They're very high. They also are related directly in reading and math and in science, the next generation standards into the common core. Um, in phys ed, the State of Vermont just passed, uh, new health standards for both health and phys ed. Our proficiencies relate to those as well, to the standards that the State of Vermont, because that's what the EQS says. The other piece that is, you can see here, we have our South Burlington ends, uh, lifelong learning, two, three, and four, um, and, um, academic proficiency, one, two, and five are directly related into that reading standard so that when we assess that, we'll also be assessing those ends at the same time. This year's work, and again, you're passing the proficiencies, the policy, but this year's work is to come up with the indicators for the middle school, next year's work for the elementary school, so that we'll be working on the same proficiencies, just with developmentally appropriate indicators at all grade levels, so that eventually we have a, a true K-12 system where everybody's going in the same direction. The proficiencies, the end game, is kind of what, what drives it. The other piece, again, part of the state educational quality standards is the fact that, um, there are now transitionals. I'm gonna go up to the edit button because, excuse me. Huh. I'm gonna go with my left hand because I'm left-handed. All of the, the other piece there, as you see, is the question of transitional skills. And what we ask for every proficiency is what are the transitional skill, uh, the transitional skills that the state, uh, requires and what, how do they relate into the content areas? So that even though it's a separate proficiency, for every single one of our documents, for example, there are two to three transferable skills that are embedded in the content so that we know that clear and effective communication is part of the language arts. And we certainly also understand that informed and integrative thinking, that's why you read, that's why you write, that's why you do, that those transitional skills are, uh, embedded. So as we build our documents, even though it's a separate standard by the state's definition, we have integrated them in. And again, with those as well, we have. And again, with those as well, we have pointed out the ends that are appropriate. So if we were to go and open the health document, which I don't have, you know, unless I go to the whole link, you would see your personal development skills. In your social studies, you would see more of your citizenship ends, you know, as well. So then in the self-direction, which actually math, a lot of their work, they are, are actually things that are in self-directions such as persistence, they use that transitional skill as one of their big three. And within that self-direction, you also see some of those personal development ends. So those indicators are there. We think they're very rich. And that answers the question of what do the proficiencies really mean? What they really mean is the way that we measure those indicators.
Stuart, on the, on the performance indicators, are those, I'm, I'm sort of thinking about the assessment process here, but are those, is subjectivity taken out of the equation when you go through these? I'm, I'm kind of imagining a, a senior who hopefully will not be surprised if they're not meeting some proficiency.
So there, there are two answers to that question, Elizabeth. So one of the reasons why we're putting this in front of you here and not in 2020 now is because the eighth graders now, this is the program that they'll go through and so we don't want any surprises that way. But the work at the high school this year is actually to build the proficiency, the performance-based assessment system. So what they're working on is the rubrics, the assessments, how students would demonstrate. And we have a model basically where we take both content and, and, you know, it's an experimental model. We'll be doing it for midterms and finals for some students this year in all the content areas, but taking some content standard indicators and some transferable skill indicators and building a performance task that would embed certain things. And we have a model for that and I would be happy at a future time, you know, to show you, because this is the work. And I can only say that the work of especially Alyssa McDonald and the administration, the CASs at the high school, as well as Alicia Backman, who have really shepherded this work. We really believe that we will have a performance assessment system that will take the subjectivity out of this and also so there'll be no surprises. So the kid who, at the end of their ninth grade year, don't make the standards that we believe would have the kinds of supports, because our goal is that kids will get out of the high school graduating proficient in four years.
So given the change in the standard, how will that be communicated home? Because that's, you know, that's a, that's a big deal.
Right. Well, one of the pieces, of course, is once the proficiency-based standards are approved by the board and they become, those are the, the pieces, then we will begin. This obviously is part of a public forum, but there will certainly be an informational night in January, much more elaborate than it has been in the past, because in the past all we've really had to tell, parents is, well, you need four English credits, you need three math credits, you need this. But this will be, a lot of people, and the high school, we have a, we have a professional, a proficiency-based learning committee made up of one elementary principal, some teachers, the administration in the middle and the high school. And we've been meeting regularly to plan out a, a variety of activities, including, you know, a big informational night in January, but that gets this information out to the parents, the students, the community, because it's a different way of thinking. I mean, it really is a paradigm shift. And again, the educational quality standards, you know, put forward that this is what we need to do. This is not like we're choosing to do this. But I do want to say that this was a direction that our high school administration and, and curriculum people, we were already leaning in that direction. So it just reaffirms for us what we think is good education.
You know, I couldn't be more pleased. I mean, as I talk up to others around the state, I mean, I'm, I'm not wanting to say we're, you know, we're on the top. I, I have to tell you, we, I mean, as Stuart alluded to some of the, the work on the committees, and we just had kind of a, you know, a quick, our admin meeting and reflection. But also the middle school actively engaged in this process, you know, to see the Alyssa McDonald's and some of the staff collaborating and working and the outcomes that are happening. And, you know, some of the positives, I think, that are also coming out of the middle school, as well as our elementary administrators, you know, are all, you know, leading in and very actively involved. And I'm happy about kind of some proactive trend. We still have a ton of work to do. And I think you, you allude to the communication strategies that are gonna be, tell me what this means, you know? What does this mean to me, a new parent, you know, coming into kindergarten or moving to this community? What does it mean to me? And we, we're gonna have to really work hard at that. It's a pretty big paradigm shift.
One thing, this Friday, the middle school and the high school, now actually for the first time, have an in-service together where a lot of this information is to be shared because the next step for the middle school is to work on those indicators that are developmentally appropriate. So, you know, again, kudos to Alyssa McDonald, she certainly has helped us, us out a lot in this process as to what this looks like and, you know, what the next steps would be for the middle school as well.
So, I mean, I, this one thing I'm pondering here is I, you wanna, I mean, I wanna see proficiency, the measurement of proficiency to really mean something. I mean, I want the kids who graduate or award the degree to be college-ready, because you hear stories and not so much from South Burlington, that kids are going to college and they're having to take a, a year of remedial classes. Now, are we setting the bar too low?
Where do you hear that? Because I don't hear that.
I didn't say for South Burlington, I read, you know.
But just in general.
All right.
As we move, as we move to this methodology.
As we move to this methodology.
I am, well, that's good.
Are we, are we willing?
I believe him.
Thank you, Patrick, for backing me up on that fact. He says. So, I, I'm concerned, are we willing to really truly put the commitment in that this is what proficiency means? You have to be college-ready. And if it's gonna take you six years in high school to do this, are we willing to put the resources to back that up? I know we're not gonna have that, I mean, we do a terrific job in South Burlington. I don't mean to cast aspersions, which I'm not doing, but it's that setting of that bar, which is very interesting.
So I think there are two aspects of it and, and that's why, you know, so again, I want to be clear that what we're passing as a policy is that these are the proficiencies that graduate. The indicators, if these turned out to be too low, for example, we could certainly raise the indicators, that's why they're not quote, "policy." But I also think that the key piece, and that's why we'd like to certainly do the model and show you how we're moving towards performance assessment, because that part of it, I think, would reassure you. The other piece is that in the past, you needed to have four credits of English. Nobody said, the ends did, but nobody officially said, you have to be proficient in writing. So you have many students who, at the end of their sophomore year, find the English electives in which writing didn't exist and they could graduate because they had four credits of English. This is not gonna be the case anymore, you know? If a course does not move to the proficiencies, you know, then it may not exist or it will be modified so that if a student takes it, now, it's not gonna say that every course is gonna have writing in it. But there's gotta be enough courses that make sure that you're proficient to the graduation level in writing and that you have to take it either as a course, and remember it's flexible pathways, or maybe you'll work in an internship. You know, maybe it's a dual enrollment course, it's not a course that we're gonna provide. All those things are part of the whole piece. But the key is that you can't actually get out not being proficient in writing, which right now, technically you could. And that's probably one of the major areas in which when kids go to college, if they're not really good writers, that they end up with a remedial help.
Based on our evaluation system today. I mean, we have kids, I'm not saying, in, in general, you know, as, as students migrate through our current system, you know, it could be a D or a C. And it doesn't necessarily translate into what we would deem the proficiency that you want, but nonetheless, they, they move on. And so this, you know, those indicators are important, but.
I also want to be clear, this is about a well-rounded education, right? If I want to go to MIT, I'm gonna need to be more than proficient in science. For the proficiency to graduate might be very different for the kid who really is going to be doing science things than the kid who's gonna be really doing art things. And we have kids who make those choices now. So I also want to make sure that people understand the proficiency is, you know, this is the level to get out, but it's still gonna look like a very different thing depending on students' interests, especially for juniors and seniors, as they develop their program. Because the personal learning plan process, which is another part of the EQS, is also part of this, because students would track and for the first time, you know, there's a dialogue, you know, about what this all looks like in terms of why I want this internship or why I would take this class as opposed to.
I have to get this in. So, thank you, Stuart. I know, Elizabeth, you have a couple of questions.
Kathy.
Yes, you may.
So Stuart, just to be clear, you're not saying that there won't be classes, English one, two, three, four? You're not, there still will be classes, English one, two, three, four, but you can't graduate based on getting through them?
Right.
Am I right?
You graduate based on proficiency.
Right, you need so many credits for college, but that's just not how we're gonna graduate, no. I'm confused.
Colleges will, will look at a transcript and say, how many years of world language you took, for example.
So that doesn't change.
But, but it's not a Carnegie-based system. In other words, you know, I did my two years of world language, therefore, you know, I'm set. There are some world language proficiencies that I would have to attain in order to graduate.
So taking them as not a nap, you also have to be successful?
Right.
But it's still gonna show that we took those and, okay. So I also have another question, comment, maybe. When you said, when you first talked about the proficiencies, I was thinking, oh, we're gonna have to pull out the ruler for those third graders because it's quite difficult to get them to pay attention all the time. And then, you know, you said it doesn't have to be then, it can be just by graduation, right? Which is, I, I hear you, but that is the way it goes, right? Sometimes we learn at different paces. So if, if we can do that and have graduation proficiencies, why couldn't we just open up the classrooms and let everybody, instead of having grade levels, just let everybody progress as they would then? Through the system, through the classes, without having the grades? I mean, wouldn't that be a money saver? Wouldn't that be an innovative way to look at education?
But Kathy, I'm not gonna disagree with you.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm, I'm gonna focus for just a second more on the high school than the elementary because there, there are a couple, a couple of different complications. Because we do have, you know, all these things have to be related to the state-recognized curriculum, which includes, for example, the common core. And the third grade math common core, it's very grade-specific, is really different than the fourth grade common core and so on. And we watch the progression of that as we build these indicators, you know, with our own assessments and also with the S-PACs that we, we just took. So there is that. But it is this Act 77, which is the personal learning plan, flexible pathways, which is part of the educational quality standards, does say that it could be over time that the high school as we know it, or even the middle school and high school as we know it, you still have to stay till you're, you know, 16, unless a college takes you or something, you know? But as we know it, could be shift, will shift and change. And that's up the road, right? You know, right now, what we're doing is we're doing, you know, here's the courses we teach now, what proficiencies are in them, what proficiencies are not being taught, that we need to make sure that we meet, you know, where are those indicators lacking? How do we build and change the courses to shift that way? But over time, right now, for example, the CDC, it's a half elective credit. But it might be that I'll get my, you know, an English proficiency because of an internship that I now do with the CDC. And that might expand the kinds of things we do there. And so it is about not just sitting in a seat, right? It really is about creating a more dynamic landscape, but it's a dynamic landscape that's going to shift over time.
So, and then, I want to move on because we need, we do need to move on, Kathy. Important questions and I don't want them to stop. On the elementary side, you know, we do need to be aware of developmental assets of students too, right? Their developmental age, even though their cognitive abilities may be higher, we still need to be sensitive to their developmental practices too. So that does need to get factored in, particularly at the elementary age level. As you know, there's behaviors that are specific with that. But good questions and we certainly would welcome, if you have others to, you can send them to us or send them to Stuart, it'd be great.
So David, on this particular policy, this will go on our next agenda for a third and final reading? Is that?
Yep, and we can put action on it if you're ready to do so. I probably would suggest that. It doesn't mean that we can't continue to come back and revisit it, but it is important kind of for us to establish some, some, some end, end game for the work that you've heard Stuart highlight this evening. So I would recommend we put it on for action.
Next time.
Next time.
And one of the missing pieces might be the connection to the links.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, which I did not send to Stuart.
Does the board have other information they would like to receive in advance of a third reading?
Great. Thank you, Stuart.
All right. We'll move on to agenda item 11.
So 2.2. Made some changes. The changes are articulated in the yellow again, kind of common practice. Not a whole lot in the very beginning of the document. Page one, two, and three are pretty, are not touched. We begin to have a few changes and added an append, an attachment six that you see on page four of eight, and then some more changes that continue. So, let me just pause and let you ask the questions.
This attachment six is so impossible to read.
Yeah, that's on the absence stuff.
You can use the same colors for different things, I, I can't.
Yeah. So, I mean, let me, yeah. So this is again our, this is, these are the available reports for us for ASOP, which is our.
Oh, this is like a pre.
Yeah, so these are, these are canned and, you know, I.
I mean, I, okay.
We have a lot of different ways we can look at them. I think they're, these are pretty, you know, this is almost maybe too much for you, but nonetheless, provides, I, I thought, evidence that, you know, of what we're.
I mean, we can definitely see the totals on the bottom, I just visually, it doesn't work for me.
Yeah.
I guess my question is on way back at policy number six, which is what we talked about
Policy number six.
Which is the neglect to provide meaningful and timely performance evaluations to administrators, teachers, and staff. I like that you added meaningful, the interpretation. But I guess, I have a, I forgot to bring my notes from our last one, so I don't know exactly if you've answered all my questions.
Of course I have.
But I look at this and I was expecting much more yellow than this, no. The, the biggest question that I have, and I can double check, is that, I mean, does, what we asked, I'm fairly sure, my memory's spotty.
Yeah.
That we wanted you to address each of Sarah Denny's recommendations and does this do that now? As far as what's going on with the recommendation?
It sounds like based on what you're saying here, you changed what you're gonna do from what she suggested you do based on your discussion with the administrators, is that true?
No, I think, I think we've stayed pretty true to, I think we stayed true to the recommendations that Sarah's put forth. I'm letting you know that there's some work in progress that's happening. Have not been able to get everything done, so I'm wanting to let you know that.
I guess, I mean, but what I want, wanted to see is, you know, this is her recommendation, this is what we're doing for, which.
Just want to see it?
It could include, it could include saying, we've thought about this, we've talked about this, and we've rejected it for the following reason, or here's what we're doing to get this done.
Yeah, so you're just seeing the actions, not necessarily the, what the recommendations were.
Well, I want to know what each of her recommendations are and what action is or has been, is, has or is being planned to be taken.
So, excuse me, Martin, those are summaries of all the recommendations on there, but they aren't the language necessarily.
Of what?
Of the, of that she used, so we could, we could certainly change it to that, but it's a quick summary of every single one of those recommendations and what we have done or not done at this point.
Under evidence there, Meg, on page seven, in the highlighted line, starting with "based on," Sarah's name is not spelled right.
All right.
Just a little thing that.
Well, also that first paragraph needs to be moved down because.
Right.
I don't think that Sarah Denny's evaluation report had anything to do with administrator evaluations or support staff. It, it really has to do with, you know, the last.
Yeah, mm-hmm, so we can, yeah.
So Martin, are you suggesting we specifically put.
Sarah's.
A summary of her recommendations?
I guess, I mean, I really want to see the crosswalk.
Right.
I mean, I could do it myself, but I just don't have her recommendations in front of me right now to do that.
Yeah, I mean, I wasn't trying to, I mean, when, when you, when the board, I, I viewed this as when the board does a, a deeper dive, you know, that I wasn't, I wasn't. You know, that, I wasn't, I wasn't thinking that I would just include the whole deep dive into the document as evidence, but yet articulate the, the needed outcomes as evidence. And that you do, that, that you, the board, have the, the document that says, you know, these were the recommendations. I think for a sense of ease, I'm, I'm fine to just include those, those bullet points exactly, verbatim from Sarah, and not have you do that crosswalk. But I'm just, you know, as, as you, the board, under policy governance, always have the right to do, I'm not using the right term, the, the deeper dive and request into the data. Inspection, thank you. So I, you know, if it's a thirty-page document, I didn't, I, this is an exaggeration. I wouldn't wanna be including all of that deeper dive into the evidence, because then you know these-
Right, no, I'm not asking, but I think she had a one-page list of the, of things.
Yeah, it's fine.
And I'd rather just see it, it's just that this has been such an important topic that we've been pounding after, and I'm not willing yet to stop honing to find out exactly what we're-
We can include her, um-
Well, and it's also been in the board's practice too, in the year that more specific work is done, it's highlighted in the monitoring report, and then that could go away the following monitoring report.
Yeah, it would go away once these recommendations are dealt with, sort of, but-
Yep.
So that would be one change. I had a quick comment on page four, which I just hadn't caught before, but Evidence Bullet Point Three, "Systems for Tracking HR Functions Are Primarily Based on Trust." Now, I understand there are no time clocks, but this kind of implies that systems for tracking HR functions are completely based on trust, and that, and that doesn't make sense to me.
They're supposed to be, didn't, didn't we learn that there was building by building? There was tracking that by the building administrator?
Like what, ASOP, I mean, absences?
Yeah.
Well, I, I think that, in general, this is related to positive organizational climate, right? And one of which was that we also have systems in place where we are holding employees accountable, right? One of which was, is, is ASOP. But there definitely is, when people, you know, are performing a variety of duties, there's, they, they need to, they need to tell us, and there, there is a, there's an expectation that they're telling us honestly what's going on, which we're-
So is ASOP a substitute for building administrator approval?
No, but ASOP is a, is a place where they go in and say, you know, today, you know, I'm not feeling well, and they're able to do that tonight.
But the building administrator is still approved.
But the building administrator, actually, we have better, I think, better system, although it's still based on trust, 'cause you gotta push the button and say, I'm not feeling well, right? And we do have systems in place under HR where we, after three days, can request a doctor's note. You know, and actually, we have, we have more leeway with other, with other staffs as well, but, yeah, that's probably a funny, funny statement.
Well, yeah, and I, I feel like the more accurate word is that, it's not the systems, it's the, 'cause the sys, the system itself is populated by self-reporting in some cases.
Yeah, that's better, yeah.
But it's not exclusively self-reporting either. 'Cause there is some tracking that's going on, and some supervisor approval.
Yeah, checking in, meeting, you know, I mean, administrative-
And some follow-up after a certain number of days, or something like that, so.
So you wanna reword that a little bit, maybe that trust?
I, I think I would modify that to-
Yeah.
Maybe one of, so the parenthetical starts after the research, it seemed to end in that sentence, so you didn't know where you're ending there, 'cause it seems to imply something different than what you might mean.
Yeah, all right, we can, I can redo that one.
Any other comments? So we'll modify that and revisit it?
You got it.
All right, go on to ends monitoring. How does the budget affect the ends?
So would you like to see the slideshow, you've got, you've had it in your packet? Do you wanna just ask questions? I need to know, I have it queued up, happy to, happy to present.
I mean, this, this was an exercise that, that we chose to do this way, and Stuart worked with me on presenting this in a way that provided some level of clarity around, you know, that, that ends aren't empty of budgetary needs. I think not always easy to, to draw that direct correlation to what are the budget implications. But that, this is, this is, again, an attempt to do that. So I don't know what your pleasure is. We are currently running a tad behind, we're at nine twenty. You have Board Job Descriptions, and Student, Role of Student Representative are two other items that you're really gonna take a little bit of time.
I just said sort of a general question in this one, and that is, I think the intent of this is to try to identify those areas in which the ends affect the budget, and in turn, the budget affects the ability to achieve the ends. So the question that I, that comes to my mind is, given that these are the areas of impact tied to the ends, are we deficient in any of these that we need special attention to? Does that make sense? So it's, I mean, it's nice to know that they, that there's an interplay between the budget and the achievement of the ends. I think, from this body's standpoint, the question that's to be addressed is, are there shortfalls that need to be faced up to some kind of a way?
Yeah.
I don't expect an answer right now, but I'm thinking, you know, and, and while I appreciate understanding the connectivity of some of these things, I don't end up with a action to do, okay?
So an example for you, academic proficiency, you know, as an end, how does that then connect to budget?
Well, I mean, if you look through some of these things and the others, it's, what you're saying, I think, is that to meet the, the, these, you have the proficiency, you have the, the end, say academic proficiency, then you have a list of, of, here's some budget items that are related to it, okay? But I don't know whether the response of the district is adequate, in your judgment, at this point in time, or begs for a change in the budget allocation, or quantity, or what, okay?
I think a lot of this circles back to data, and-
You know, and I, I- If I could, David? So at one level, I hear exactly what you said, I'm not gonna answer that question as such, Dan, but, for example, there are additions such as the coaches. So last year, if we had done this report, there wouldn't have been any coaches, and we would've said there was a, a, a thing that was keeping us from achieving our academic ends, that we felt was an important way of looking at how to support teachers to be better tier-one instructors for all students with a higher expectations, particularly in math. And so we came to the board and asked for math coaches and funding for that. So at this moment, you know, we, you know, that's a new thing, and it, it may be, for example, we only did a point five here, and, and I'm not saying, you know, 'cause we have a lot of different pressures, whether it's one point seven percent increase, or a variety of other things, enrollments, but within that, you know, we're trying to build a model that supports teachers and students for success in the ends. So there are things there that, if we had done this report a year ago, wouldn't have been there. This is kind of like a status quo report, in a sense. So I think that somewhere along the line, as we develop the budget, if there are changes, we wanna look and see what changes would we make.
From my viewpoint, that's fair, that, that you're gonna use this as a guidepost, 'cause you start going into the budget thing, and that will get some visibility into places where you think change is appropriate.
Right.
And that there will be some balancing process that says, you know, maybe a little less here, a little more here, but short this much, or enough room to do something we weren't able to do, or whatever it turns out to be. Just it needs to go that next step, is in my mind.
Yep.
And it seems like this is really talking about, on the margins of the budget, because eighty percent of the budget, bringing in our teachers to do all these four ends is where most of it is, but it gets around the margins of special things that we're budgeting to help us, and help, well, actually, to help the teachers to achieve the ends.
Hopefully become systemic things, things that stay with the system, or just one-time's easy.
It, it's just, it's hard to measure certain things, for example, you know, we just decided to increase, because of the enrollment in the fourth grade, you know, we have a recommended class size. We don't know big class, small class, you know, what real direct impact that has on ends. We suppose, you know, twenty-seven kids sitting in a class is not a good thing, you know, with one teacher. So, you know, we didn't address any of those kind of issues in this kind of a report.
So where do we wanna go with this?
Well, I think you're, you're giving us, we've got a couple pieces of feedback. This is kind of our first, first step. I don't know if, again, useful, we're, we're trying to have a more deliberate conversation around ends and, and this tie. I don't, you know, we're not totally there, we're gonna keep working on it. Again, I think you've heard a lot on assessment and transferable skills, and where those, where some of those things fall into our ends. I think we can continue to update this, so that we start to put, you know, if you will, dollar amounts that we're spending, kind of, in these areas, would be my hope, so that, and, and it should be based, again, on data, if we're academically, I'm just gonna say, by grade, way off of the chart, doing really well, but other areas of week, we should see the, the transfer of some, some dollars to support, you know, citizenship, or, or what have you. So it's a, kind of, a bigger bucket, guidepost, if you will, to, to help us do the work we're trying to do as a district. Again, I don't, I don't, you know, again, kudos to Stuart, we're, we're working through this to try, try to provide us with more clarity, and hopeful that it's helpful to you, I think the feedback, just the dialogue tonight, is helpful.
Yeah, with, I mean, without getting too much further off schedule here, I, I have to say I struggled with this one. In part, because even the language on the cover page isn't consistent with our end. So it was, it was like a new, a new statement.
Yeah, that's our, that's, that's been our administrative, yeah.
And, and I guess my general thought is that this could be more succinct, in terms of maybe a description of the ends, and then where, where the incremental investment or rebalancing would be, 'cause I don't think it all should be incremental investment here. But I, I have to say, I did struggle with how to interpret this and how to use it.
Yep.
On a going-forward basis, so I'll just offer that at this point.
Well, let us, that's good, let us, Stuart now will talk about it, and again, this will, you'll see it in a different light when we bring it back again. We haven't really, that, that frequency of this, we haven't talked about, and-
I think it's, it is, like I said, to me, it was, was to have some baseline pieces of where, where we are now, so as we move forward into the budgeting season, we can begin to, to really look the ends' relationship to the budget, which we, I think, have just skirted around, you know, for, for, for years.
Thanks, Stuart.
Okay. All right, we'll move on to Agenda Item 12, Board Development. 4.2, the Board Job Description. Looks like there were some modifications made.
Yep.
So, just jumping ahead to item three.
That was just a note, anyway, that I had put into the draft.
What?
So just leave it at default?
Oh, and item three, I'm sorry, it's like item five, I saw, I'm just-
Yeah, item five is got, that's the one, the note was the wrong. But I, I got it, I guess, the, what we've got is just complete to examples in that category.
Monitor?
Yeah, we put monitor on number two, we added monitor number two on the first page to take care of the monitoring one.
Pushed up to the focus.
I think up in, just in number one in A, I think you need to say district ends there, I just, we use ends all the time, but the average person just has no idea what we're talking about.
Mhm.
I guess I'm not entirely sure if both strategic and tactical adds to that. Maybe somebody else suggested that, and I don't recall, but I don't know what that adds to one A.
Well, one easy definition is that tactical's within the current budget and strategic is something you have a budget in for you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I look at it as-
That's one easy definition.
Yeah, I look at it as short versus longer term.
Short, long.
Would you rather say something like that?
Should we say, should we say, we thought?
Tactical should be consistent with your strategy.
Short and long term.
Well, shouldn't, oh, shouldn't say both tactical and strategic then, don't you start with the short term? Or no, I guess you don't, you start with the long term.
If it's ambiguous, why don't you just change it to make it very clear?
Yeah, not necessarily. Sometimes ambiguity works towards advantage, Kathy.
All right, so do we wanna memorialize these changes, and?
Oh, I, I have one other question, on five, on five H. I guess this, whether we need to do anything in addition to what's in five, given the discussion actually earlier about the rebel's name, because, I mean, we're still not saying that if there's something that the superintendent can't do, like rename or the school, or change the identity, like it says in the asset 7.210, or whatever it is. I mean, this isn't, we haven't asked him for a recommendation that we're either gonna approve or disapprove, we're, we're just in a position where we have to do it, and the question is whether it's, that's inferred and that's enough? I, I, having asked that question, I think the answer is yes, that, I mean, I mean, I, but I think that we need, I need to flag that, that that's something that's-
No, can you say that again, 'cause I don't think I agree with you, say it again.
Okay, all right. All right, if there's something, a prohibition that's in the limitations, the policy limitations, such as you can't change the identity of the school or name of the school, is it enough, I mean, nowhere in here does it say that we can do that.
We can still direct him to do it, can't we?
I think, I think you have a question, if you said, all right, if you said decide, or make decisions that are beyond the authority delegated to the superintendent, and just made it simple like that, and not even speak to recommendations, we could, we would always probably seek recommendations, but if we just said, take action that's beyond the authority of the superintendent, and left it at that, that would probably address what you're asking.
Yes. What Patrick said. Yeah, I think that's right, I mean, that's, yes.
Does we could still, yeah.
Yeah, we could still act, ask a recommendation, absolutely.
The action could be directed to the superintendent.
Explicitly say that, if you didn't have authority, we do.
Right.
Right.
Did you get that done?
No.
Or you wanna say, do you wanna say, do you wanna just take all the, decide to take action? Decide on action that is beyond the authority delegated to the superintendent, or?
Or take, take action.
Take action.
That is beyond the authority, or, we can wordsmith it.
Decide whether to take action that is beyond the authority delegated to-
Or we wanna just decide to, and it would be taking action, right?
'Cause it may not be a superintendent's recommendation.
Right.
Well, well, I'm just saying, we wanna say, take action that's beyond the authority, what if we decide not to? I guess then we're not taking action.
Right.
Take action's fine, thank you.
So, take action.
Like I said, what Patrick said.
All right, keep us, keep it going.
I try to convince other people, and that's always true, but-
This is take, take action on, on, is it items, I'm sorry, I didn't-
On items that are beyond the superintendent's-
Beyond the superintendent's. Yeah, beyond the authority.
Get that next.
Okay. So with that modification, we'll bring it back. So, do we have anything on the role of student representatives?
Yeah, I mean, David and I met with Patrick about, just to chat about the role of our student representatives, and, I think we all agreed that we need to change it up a little bit. Would you say that's right, David? So Patrick was going to talk to John Painter about how best to do that, and it's probably going to be a change that happens after this year, right, David? That's what we decided.
Right, doesn't mean that with the welcoming of the new board and the rally, there can't be some movement, movement.
We can, we can move in that way.
But I think the, the, the process, the, you know, all of the things that you identified in Watts, you know, we, we're kind of, we have things in place currently that, you know, he felt that kind of needed to be honored, although moving forward, he's happy to, to see those things, you know.
So I think he was gonna come back to us with a recommendation, but he did charge our, our board with trying to figure out what, what kinds of ways we could use the, the students, and try to figure out how students are used on other boards, in a, in a different way, maybe.
Yeah, and, and so there, there were, there's some actions, and I, I don't have that with you, but, you know, the State Board of Education has a student rep, how do they get, how do they get appointed? What process do they go through, what do they submit, that-
We'll have an opportunity at the VSBA annual meeting to talk to the board members.
Yeah, so that's, those are- Yeah, so that's, those are, that's one example. There's other board, or student representatives as well, that we thought we would look. So those we're going to bring back.
Right.
Absolutely, it'd be great that you ask those questions while you're down there.
It was a good discussion.
Thanks, Julie.
All right, we'll move on to setting the agenda for the October 21st meeting. And we've got action on the proficiency-based graduation. We've got update or action on the rebel nickname. We've got any other policy? We've got 2.2 rolling over. And 4.2 rolls over.
Yeah, I think what I'll do on the rebel name, like we did on this one, I made it a separate item. I think it would be better so that it's, I think, not necessarily correct, and it's going to be just my report. So I'll move that, like we did, out to a actual item number. So 4.2, we'll go to, you wanted to go to action? Or, no?
I think we'll take that to action.
Yeah.
Yeah. Do we want to put anything on master visioning and planning, given that we would have had the steering committee the prior week?
Yep, that's good, that's a good catch, it should be on there. Well, you've also asked...
Is it just an update, Elizabeth, or is it something more than that?
I don't know, because we won't have had the steering committee, so if we put a placeholder on the agenda, we can figure that out.
Well, we'll keep it on there, I want to be sensitive to the work that we've got to do for the steering committee in this, so I think an update is, we ought to keep it as a placeholder, updating on where we're at.
City and school collaboration, anyway.
Yeah.
Unless there's something specific we have to discuss coming out of that meeting? All right, anything on future agenda items for the 21st? For any meeting? I'm not seeing none, move to agenda item 15. Any comments or changes to the minutes of the September 16th meeting?
Thank you for coming.
Seeing none, those are approved. Any comments on the September 21st meeting? Seeing none, those are approved. Move on to the consent agenda.
And you have, under consent agenda, I want to just highlight, Kelsey Miller is the elementary teacher here at Rick Marcaut, and somewhere in your folder, you have her information. Yes, you do, Kelsey Miller. She, we're lucky, again, it was a good process. She has, she did her student teaching here. She, that was last year. She then has been working with us as a par educator, and she had been working directly with the third grade. So there's a lot of connections and a lot of relationships that have informed, so that's going, that's going well. Brent Coon has, through the process, volunteered, has quite a few volunteers filling that classroom up already. So again, this will be an important next step. Once she signs her contract, then we'll begin to communicate and, you know, let folks know. So it's right away, we're trying to make this happen. I can't actually remember the specific timeline for the transitions. If you're interested, I can share that with you, which is communicated.
Does that mean we are going to, we're going to be minus one par educator as well?
Well, right now, that's right, she's currently in that role, so right now, we'll be kind of in a position and hold. You know, would be my recommendation, I have given Brent, you know, I'm not wanting to just, you know, I want to be aware of where some of those needs are currently going on, before I'm just, you know, that's it, that's all, kind of thing. So he's going to provide me back some information specifically for the par educator void.
David, you said you had volunteers to start this process, but will the process end with substantial equal class size?
Pretty close, it sounds like, again, I, you know, Brent has told me it's, I think he had 17 or 18 volunteers into the classroom. A few things, I think, important to note, and I don't need to go too long on this, but part of it is always about learning community. They've been three classrooms, and they've had a friend to their right and their left, they're now not going to have that same. So what are they going to be doing? What could they be doing? Morning meeting, which is part of responsive classroom, is there an opportunity to do some mixing? You know, on certain days, not maybe every day? Can they do some shared activities and events together, so that they keep that kind of neat camaraderie together and honoring kind of the, what we started out with as three, now gone to four? So the good thing is, the classroom teachers are all been very, very responsive, and we're going to work that out. So I'm pleased with that.
You don't need action on this, I assume?
Nope.
Any questions on AP orders 10, 10A, 11, 12, 13, and 14?
Is there a note in some of these that they require, they're large enough that you require a separate approval? Or did I add it?
Nope, I think, I think we're okay, thanks for asking, Patrick. I don't think any of these came out for that. Right, John? No?
No, there was a question, it came in late this afternoon, maybe three, but one dealt with Great Western. It's $91,000. It is the annual payment, district contribution to 403 plans, 403B plan. For one, it's for the support staff who contribute up to 2% or more. The district makes a 2% contribution to them. That's about $60,000. The second part... I think we got board approval on, it's, let me finish this one, I'll get back to you, sir. So $60,000 match of 403B. Then there's the new defined contribution plan that is about $8,000. This is the first time we've ever made that, and that's 4% for those eligible employees who aren't in our other plan. And then there's $17,000 for central office administrators and their contract, of which David had had an account, and there's three other administrators. So that's where it comes from, it's a benefit, it's due on a certain date, so... Patrick just pointed out to me...
The key words, 403, when you...
Yeah, yeah, that's a good question. Yeah. We, Patrick pointed out, there's in here, one of these, there's a negron chase bill for 185 grand. I think we took care of that when I was gone.
Ah, okay.
You were there then?
What's that? I just, it came in my packet, I looked at it, it said...
Yeah, no, it was.
There's a question, there were two other questions that came in at 4 o'clock. One had to do with solar with the city. I don't know the status of that.
I'm trying to find out where they're at with that, Dan, or, actually, I'm pointing Dan out.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. We look forward to helping with the board, and if it's not going to happen, we don't know that.
No, yeah. I am, I'm trying to find out where they're at with that. There was some funding, as you remember, I'm not going to remember exact, but there was funding that dropped out as a result, and I don't know where they're at, if that's going to... Yeah. The only, the only other thing was just at your place, you had other things, some of which we went through, but there was a thank you to the board about those that were able to come around the C-SPAN bus, and that was specific from Pam McKenzie. So I should just, wanted to point that out.
Oh, I'm sorry, the last question was the status of the green field press box. It's been torn down, destroyed, taken away.
Still there, last week when I looked.
It's gone now, Dan.
It was cut down during the rain on Monday.
Yeah.
Last I looked, it was still there.
This is the, this is the turf field, or, this is the grass field close to the intersection of Kennedy Drive and Dorset Street, that corner one.
Okay, we don't want it up there anymore.
No, that's something you want to hear.
All right, do we have feedback to Martin on board feedback?
I wish we could evaluate Martin.
Feedback on Martin?
Feedback on Martin, oh.
I don't think we have a mechanism for calling out individual board members, thankfully.
All right, let's see, we have, for the board, pretty much all agrees, as far as... Well, there was a disagree, oh, yeah, a disagreed board member arrived on time and prepared for discussion. I wasn't on time or really prepared, really, so...
I thought you were sufficiently prepared.
Mostly.
Well, three minutes after, true, but, all right. As far as data reports provided to the board on time, we had some disagrees with that, and one person specifically mentioned that the student...
Deliberation.
Thank you. Somebody who doesn't know how to write clearly, who should have been a doctor or a lawyer. But we, I think generally, we really appreciate seeing the students tonight as well. I'm sorry, that was very abbreviated, but I'll move to adjourn.
Do I have a second? All in favor? I agree, adjourned.
Thank you.